Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I will call into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees for the November 2nd, 2017, meeting beginning at 7:02 PM. Thank you, everybody, for coming out this evening. We, as a ceremonial, will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Branham in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now if you would please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And if you would please join me in a moment of silence. So the first item on our agenda this evening under program and presentation is a student performance by our district-wide junior high school choir. And I like that their outfit is a tee-shirt. It's fitting on this 90-plus degree November day.[125.42][125.42](Laughter). Please.
The AISD has a rich and successful choral tradition. Our groups have represented the district from San Antonio as invited on our choirs at the Texas Music Educators Association to the American Choral Directors Association. This evening, we will be treated to a district-wide junior high school choir performing "Find the Cost of Freedom," arranged by Nick Page, under the direction of Tana Marks from Bailey Junior High.[151.37][151.37](Applause).
I think about a hundred years ago, how my father's bled. I think I see a valley covered with bones in blue. All the brave soldiers that cannot get older been asked after you. Hear the pastor calling from Armageddon's side. When everyone's talking and no one is listening, how can we decide? Do we find the cost of freedom buried in the ground? Mother Earth will swallow you, lay your body down. Do we find the cost of freedom buried in the ground? Mother Earth will swallow you, lay your body down. Do we find the cost of freedom buried in the ground? Mother Earth will swallow you, lay your body down.[319.14][319.14](Applause).
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That was captivating and powerful. Well, that was fantastic. Who wants to just hear more performance and not have the meeting tonight?[374.81][374.81](Laughter). Same here, but there's legal things that we have to do. All right. Moving right along, next on our agenda is the Student of the Month. And I think we have Bowie High School Principal, Mr. Bill Manley, if you want to come on up, please.
Dr. Cavassos, President Reisch, and members of the board. It's the one of the greatest things as a principal you get to do is highlight the outstanding students that come in your door every day. So I appreciate the opportunity for me to, for you to allow me to bring somebody tonight. At this time, I'm pleased to introduce the AISD High School Student of the Month from Bowie High School, Ms. Courtney Walker.[413.37][413.37](Applause). Ms. Walker is a well-rounded student who's involved in multiple activities, serving as a leader on the campus, as well as an active volunteer outside of school. Courtney has always challenged herself academically, as she is currently enrolled in the International Baccalaureate Program at Bowie, a rigorous course of study based on international standards. Prior to becoming a successful student in the IB program, Courtney was also academically successful in pre-AP math, English, science, and social studies, as well as three years of Spanish, beginning in the eighth grade. Ms. Walker demonstrates leadership qualities each day. Serving as a class officer all four years at Bowie, she has also participated in multiple organizations, which include Youth Leadership Arlington, National Honor Society, Health Occupation Student Association, Project SOAR, Student Council, a four-year student in Avid, the Delta Academy GEMS, and the University of Purdue Engineering Camp. She is also an active member of the Bowie Varsity Softball Team and a varsity cheerleader. Even with a challenging academic load and involvement in multiple organizations, she has found the time to serve others through various community engagement events. Volunteering at Mission Arlington in the Mission Arlington Medical Clinic, participating in Bowie Gives Back, a neighborhood cleanup effort for the past three years, Spook-a-palooza, Bowie's annual Fall Festival Community Event for elementary-age students, the Dallas Furniture Bank, making blankets for those less fortunate, multiple homeless shelters in Arlington and Grand Prairie as part of Delta GEMS, and the Dallas Salvation Army. Courtney has also maintained employment at Cheddar Scratch Kitchen in Grand Prairie and is currently employed at the Studio Movie Grill in Arlington. Courtney has accomplished a great deal in her educational career and developed strong leadership skills, embraced every educational opportunity that was available to her through AISD. She embraced the chance to enroll in advanced academics each time they were presented to her. She elected to take active roles in student organizations and student government positions at Bowie, and she also chose to be active in multiple athletic programs. But what's not evident in Courtney's story is another way that her education in AISD has helped her become the person she is today. Courtney has always been active, long before she came to Bowie High School. In elementary, she participated in dance, cheerleading, softball, and basketball. She was always an energetic student, and then in the fifth grade, her school nurse at West Elementary diagnosed her with scoliosis. This diagnosis created concern for her and her parents on what her future might be. As they dealt with the unknown of the situation, Courtney received treatment from the Texas Scottish Rite Hospital, and on November 28th, 2011, Courtney underwent spinal fusion surgery. She made a full recovery and was able to participate in all of the activities that she chose while at Bowie to make her the young adult that she is today. She has become a spokesperson for Scottish Rite Hospital, appearing in multiple print and video segments about her journey. This experience has helped her determine her future educational and career path once she leaves Bowie. She definitely knows she wants to enter the medical field, and anesthesiologists and orthopedic care are at the top of her list. In order to reach her career goals, she has her eyes set on a challenging collegiate experience. Howard University is her top choice, as well as looking into Morgan State and Florida A&amp;M University. Ms. Walker is a shining example of the great students we have at Bowie, and as principal, it is an honor and a privilege to present her to you tonight.[628.16][628.16](Applause).
Wow![630.16][630.16](Applause). Hi. Like you said, my name's Courtney Walker. I attend James Bowie High School. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about my story. So in fifth grade, I was diagnosed with scoliosis. At that time, I was a little nervous because we watched the videos about it, and like you could hear kids go, "Ew, aw, what is that?" And I was one of those kids. But I never, I never imagined it happening to me. So whenever the nurse diagnosed me, I was a little nervous, paranoid, because I didn't know what was going on with my body. Turns out, I was born with the condition. It doesn't hurt her anything. So whenever the nurse gave me a, like a slip to take home to my parents, I gave it to my mom, and then she just put it to the side, like, "You don't have scoliosis. I know you. This is not, you don't have it."[682.98][682.98](Laughter). So, sorry. So, going forward, a couple months passed, and we did one more re-up with the school. The nurse checked me again, and I got another slip to take home. So at that point, she probably, she realized it's something serious. So going forth, I went to a, like a standard doctor, and they did my x-rays, and my curvature went from forty percent, forty degrees, to about sixty degrees. So, yeah, it's a big jump. After that, I was referred to Texas Scottish Rite, where I met my, the best doctor in the world. Her name's Dr. Carol, Lori Carol. I had my last appointment today, by the way. Yeah.[729.41][729.41](Laughter). Yeah. It's a children's hospital in Dallas, so I'm going to be 18 in December, which means I can't go there anymore. But Dr. Carol has given me everything I can ask for. She, my spine can't fully be aligned, but she's done everything she has in her power to get it to where it needs to be. So from there, I had surgery, not December, sorry, November 28th in 2011. After that, it was a little challenging because going from an active kid to a kid that can't do, can't really do anything anymore, it was difficult. So she set me restrictions. Every three months, I would go back, six months, I would go back, and then a year, and so on. So each restriction was like something else is released. So I can ride roller coasters at one point, I can return to sports, and so forth. So with the blessing Dr. Carol gave me, I just wanted to share my story with everybody else, from a little girl feeling alone with scoliosis she had nothing, no prior knowledge about, to a girl who's grown up, taking pride in what she has. And I just want to go into the orthopedic care now because of my experience and share my story with the world. Thank you, guys.[804.69][804.69](Applause).
Well, hold on. Amazing story.
Thank you.
So you referenced your mother, and I think I can tell who it is because she was hiding her face when you were saying that.[819.98][819.98](Laughter). But would you mind introducing her or anybody else that's here with you?
Yes, sir. So this is my mom. Her name's Bridget Walker, if you can stay a mom.
All right.[828.13][828.13](Applause).
Next to her is my dad, his name's Byron Walker.
Hello, Byron.[834.13][834.13](Applause).
Just a few rows back, I have some of my aunts there, like my village, they helped raise me.
Aw, wonderful.[842.73][842.73](Applause).
That's them. And then it's my principal, one more time, Mr. Manley, and then that's everybody that's here.[850.41][850.41](Laughter).
Well, I just, I would like to say, very, very touching, and it's amazing how things that come, that life throws at you, that are, appear challenging, turn into tremendous opportunities, and can define and shape who, in your case, who, what you're looking at doing for the rest of your life. It's quite phenomenal, and it's all about your, your own personal attitude and what you do and how you deal with things in life, and you obviously have a tremendous spirit and attitude to embrace-
Thank you.
...what was a challenge, and now you're making it a great, great thing. So thank you very much. You're very well spoken. We're excited to check in with how you are progressing with your collegiate goals, and thank you, Mom and Dad, for being great, great supporters. And I think we have something. So if you want to stay right there, Dr. Cavassos and I are going to come down. Okay, so this is a pin that we wear as trustees and our superintendent. We are not very liberal with these, that we hand these out to. You are one of, you know, six, seven high school students the entire year that will be here before us, talking about and being recognized for who you are in the community at your school, et cetera. And so we, I'd like to present this pin to you. You can put it on a dartboard, wear it every day, whatever you choose to do with it, but it's just a small token of our gratitude for being a really shining star and example of what is an exemplar student in our district and community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.[973.94][973.94](Applause).
We recognize you for your accomplishments.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Take a picture here?
Yeah, come on, right here.[982.88][982.88](Laughter). All right. Congratulations. Congratulations.[986.88][986.88](Applause). All right. Outstanding. Next, we move to our administrative appointments for the evening. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reisch. I'd like to recommend that the board appoint the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Ashworth Elementary.
Move for approval.
Second?
Ooh, we have a tie.[1010.88][1010.88](Laughter). We have a motion by Mr. Hogg, a second by Ms. Walton. Seeing no discussion and recognizing a sea of blue shirts, I kind of was thinking we were talking about Ashworth tonight, right?[1036.13][1036.13](Laughter). All right. No further discussion, please vote. All trustees vote in the affirmative. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reisch. I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Principal for Ashworth, Dr. Angela Eaton.[1049.03][1049.03](Cheering and applause).
Dr. Eaton attended Dallas Baptist University for a Bachelor of Business Administration, a DBU for her Master of Education in Early Childhood, Grand Canyon University for her Doctorate in K-12 Organizational Leadership. Most recently, a teacher support interventionist at Ashworth Elementary, has been a third-grade teacher at Piercy, and has taught Kinder, first, second, and fourth grade in Dallas ISD. Dr. Eaton, congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reisch, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. I am humbled and excited to serve as Assistant Principal of Ashworth Elementary. I thank God for this opportunity to serve, empower, and promote excellence. I would like to thank my family for unwavering love, encouragement, and prayer. I am here today because of their remarkable ability to keep me accountable. You are my greatest source of inspiration. Further, I would like to thank my mentor, Tracy Brown, who took a chance on me 11 years ago. Ms. Brown, you've taught me the importance of passion and purpose, and that growth is mandatory. I am also grateful for my Piercy family, who taught me a lot about AISD. Last but not least, to Patrick Guy and my fellow Ashworth Mustangs. Thank you for believing in me. The Ashworth community inspires me to be the best servant leader I can be. The late Dr. Rita Pearson once said, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connections, and insists that they become the best they can possibly be." Ashworth Mustangs, you are champions in education. Your character, diligence, and service exemplify what it means when we say that that is just the Ashworth way. Thank you.[1171.58][1171.58](Laughter).
Wonderful.[1173.58][1173.58](Applause).
And this time, Dr. Reisch, I'd like to introduce who we appointed, or the board appointed last time but was unable to join us, the Assistant Principal for Seguin High School, Dr. Dawn, I'm sorry, Dawn Sroyeski. Not doctor yet.[1189.41][1189.41](Laughter). Dawn attended Damon College to obtain her Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, UT Arlington for a Master of Ed in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies. Most recently, Assistant Principal at Williams Elementary, has been an instructional coach at Short Elementary, fourth-grade teacher at Anderson Elementary, and has taught third and fourth grade in Fort Worth ISD. Dawn, congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, President Reisch, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, for giving me, and for giving me the opportunity to be an Assistant Principal at Seguin High School. I am very excited to join Seguin Nation. I want to thank Mr. Ray Borden and Ms. Beth Hollinger, for giving me the opportunity and believing in me and trusting in me to make that jump to high school. I want to thank many mentors here in AISD who have supported me, Mark Comwell, Kat McCollum, Tracy Cross, Mark Strand. Those are some amazing campus leaders that I really owe a lot to. I'd also like to thank some leaders that just kind of helped me out along the way, my Emerging Leaders Cohort, Bill Manley, John Wofford, and Susan Bounds. I'm, I look forward to being a part of Seguin Nation. A long time ago, someone told me, my college professor, Dr. McMahon, actually said, "You were born to do this." And I believe that because every day that I walk into a school, I feel, I feel alive, and I, and I love being there. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to continue to do that daily.[1282.71][1282.71](Applause).
Wonderful.[1284.71][1284.71](Applause). Well, exciting, exciting, great leadership. Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, and everybody. What a, what a stellar, stellar group. Now, Angela and Dawn, we have a custom that you, as appointees, follow Mr. Cale. If you could do that and form a receiving line where we can welcome you and congratulate you, and I would ask that if the audience could hold and let us go first. Oh, yeah, Courtney, why don't you get in there, too? You're still here. Yes.[1294.71][1294.71](Laughter). Good call, Mr. Hogg. So if you could let the board go first, we'd appreciate it so that we can get back here to business. So we'll take a brief break, come back in at 7:35. Thank you.[1305.23][1305.23](Cello music plays). All right, I will now call this meeting back to order. Next, let's see, we don't have any public hearings, so moving on to open forum for agenda items. And I see we have one card. So this routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings, the segment will, of the meeting, provide citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personnel matters are not appropriate subjects for the open forum. I have the one card. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. Mr. Stephen Poole, come on down.
Good evening, President Reisch and members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. I'm Stephen Poole, the Executive Director of UEA, and I'm excited to see the agenda item on the agenda tonight for the 2018-2019 calendar process. Dr. Cavassos knows this because we've already shared with him. We're not waiting for the calendar committee, even though they do a fantastic job every single year. Our association is already working on some suggestions and improvement for the calendar for next school year. You know, I guess it was three years ago, we dipped our toe in the water of extending the school day by adding minutes to the calendar for the elementary, and then added a total of 15 altogether for secondary and elementary this year. Teachers, real quickly, especially those math teachers, real quickly put pencil to paper and realize, you know, that students are going over 1,000 minutes more than what they were previously and what state law requires, but they're not getting out any earlier. And they're looking at their colleagues in other school districts to say, "How? How is it possible that a school district to the south or a school district to the east were able to do that?" But once we explain what minutes mean instead of days, and what teacher contract days mean versus minutes, you quickly understand, you know, the 1,000 minutes were built in to accommodate snow days. There are no student snow days in the calendar. So we're blessed this year, except for one freak little storm, or last school year, one freak little storm that affected some schools to not have any school day, uh, snow days. But what we're doing is, and if you, if you talk to any teacher, they want more time. And it's not PLCs, and it's not professional development, they just want more time to do their work on their own in their classrooms, and especially at the beginning of the year, when sneak-a-peeks occur and meet the teachers and all the PD and convocation and everything's going on. So what we're doing is, we're taking a look at those additional minutes currently built into the calendar and how we can give that time back to teachers at the beginning of the school year to be able to work and do what they need to do to prepare for the school year. So we're going to be bringing some suggestions to the administration, the school board, and working through the calendar committee. So we're really excited, and we want to continue working with you all on finding a solution. There is no perfect calendar. If it is, you would all be very rich in not doing this, because you can market it all across the world and the country. But what we can do is find the best possible calendar for students, parents, and educators. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Poole. Next on our agenda, we come to action items, and the first item is consider the approval of the fiscal year 1617 independent audit. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Reisch, and this evening, we bring the independent audit for your consideration. I'll let Ms. Powell introduce it, and I think there may even be a brief presentation.
Yes. Dr. Reisch, board members, Dr. Cavassos, good evening. We do have for your consideration this evening the independent audit of our 2016-2017 fiscal year. I can tell you, having been once an external auditor, and then an internal auditor, and then accounting director, and executive director of finance, and, you know, my current post, I've seen this from all sides, and I do know what is involved in planning and carrying out an audit, especially from an organization this size, and it takes a significant effort from a lot of people internally. We have our internal auditor that's very involved in the process, also our accounting department, everyone in the business office, everyone in grant departments involved from the compliance aspect of the audit. And everybody has a role to play, and it's on top of everybody's day-to-day duties to gather the information and visit with the auditors and pull documents for them, and everybody does it, and they're very gracious about it. And our auditors with Whitley Penn have been wonderful to work with, and they bring us great value and carry out their audit in a manner that is respectful of everyone's time and allows us to carry on with what we need to do. So this evening, we do have with us our two primary auditors from Whitley Penn. We have Selena Miller, who's a partner, and we have Dan Hernandez, who's senior manager. And we do have a very brief presentation to highlight some of the key points of our audit. And so with that, I will ask Selena to come and share that information with you.
Good evening, Dr. Reisch, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. As we discussed at the Audit Committee meeting earlier this month, or actually last month, but I'm here to present to the entire board, we're pleased to present an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that any entity can receive. With that, as Ms. Powell- our accounting department, everyone in the business office, everyone in grant departments involved from the compliance aspect of the audit. And everybody has a role to play, and it's on top of everybody's day-to-day duties to gather the information, and visit with the auditors, and pull documents for them, and everybody does it, and they're very gracious about it. And our auditors with Whitley Penn have been wonderful to work with, and they bring us great value, and carry out their audit in a manner that is respectful of everyone's time and allows us to carry on with what we need to do. So this evening, we do have with us our two primary auditors from Whitley Penn. We have Selena Miller, who's a partner, and we have Dan Hernandez, who's Senior Manager. And we do have a very brief presentation to highlight some of the key points of our audit. And so with that, I will ask Selena to come and share that information with you.
Good evening, Dr. Raish, members of the Board, and Dr. Cavazos. As we discussed at the Audit Committee meeting earlier this month, or actually last month, but I'm here to present to the entire Board, we're pleased to present an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that any entity can receive. With that, as Ms. Powell indicated, we visit various departments throughout the school district, not just accounting. We're looking at HR, payroll, accounts payable, et cetera, et cetera. And we are pleased to report that we are not reporting any significant deficiencies, no material weaknesses, or no instances of material non-compliance. We also audit your federal programs. This year for fiscal year 2017, Arlington ISD receives $64 million in federal funding. We tested the following federal programs as our major programs, special education, Title I, Title II, Title III. We also issue an opinion over the compliance with these federal programs, and we're pleased to report that we're issuing an unmodified opinion as well. We also consider internal controls over federal compliance, and we are also reporting no significant deficiencies, nor any material weaknesses, and no instances of non-compliance. If we move over to the general fund, and look at the actual results, or the actual numbers compared to the budgeted amounts, and you're very familiar with the budget amounts, as well as the actual numbers as they're presented to you by management, as of June 30, 2017, total fund balance ended at $199.5 million, which translates into 139 days of total expenditures. Of that, unassigned fund balance is $188.5 million, or 131 days of total expenditures. I will say that unassigned fund balance increased by $5.6 million from last year, and a healthy fund balance by both the Texas Education Agency and the Government Finance Officers Association recommends anywhere between 60 to 90 days in fund balance, and that indicates a healthy fund balance. If we look at your budgeted revenues and expenditures, you exceeded your budgeted revenue amounts by $13 million. Expenditures were under budget by $16.2 million, which ended up giving you a positive budget variance of $29.2 million. You had budgeted for a decrease to fund balance of $34.5 million for various construction projects. The actual decrease resulted, that resulted was only $5 million, but you will continue with construction in fiscal year 2018 as planned. We move over to the debt service fund. As you know, this fund is set up, you record your property taxes as revenues, and the total collections were $84.2 million. These revenues are restricted solely for the principal and interest payments on your long-term debt. Actual expenditures, which is, which are the principal and interest payments of $80.9 million, were under budget by $250,000. You had budgeted for an overall decrease to fund balance of $566,000, but you actually had an increase to fund balance of $2.1 million. Ending fund balance of $27.8 million is 34% of debt service expenditures. Because you are a June 30, 2017, or June 30 year end, you have an August payment of interest, August payment that comes due right after. For August 31 year ends, that payment is already made, and that's incorporated into the ending fund balance. So you need that healthy fund balance in order to make the payments shortly thereafter, after year end. And again, your property taxes for the next year aren't levied until October, so that's necessary. If we look at your child nutrition fund, or your food service fund, total revenues and capital contributions and transfers totaled $34.6 million. $27.4 million of that was federal funding, or 79%. Total expenses were $33.5 million. That also includes non-cash expenditures, or expenses such as depreciation and pension expense. The net increase to net position was $1.1 million, and your ending net position was $18.2 million. So everything's trending in the right direction. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
I do not see any lights indicating any questions. I, oh, spoke too soon. Mrs. Mays, go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Raish. I don't have any questions. Serving as Chairperson for our Internal Audit Committee, you were able to come and make a presentation of what you've done, and our committee has shared that, and you briefly shared with us. I just wanted to say thank you very much to Whitley and Penn for your professionalism-
Thank you.
-with treating our staff during the audit. I also wanted to thank our accounting department-
Yes, definitely.
...for being very cooperative during the audit for our external auditors. I really wanted to make sure that, of course, Cindy Powell, Tony Drollinger, thank you very much. If I could just say one other person's name on this microphone, and that's Alice Hammerick. Thank her so much. Thanks to all the staff for, once again, making sure that everything was prepared, ready for you to review.
Yes.
And I just wanted to, once again, just say thank you. Auditing is, is an awesome career. I absolutely love it. But we all know that, as Cindy mentioned when she was talking, we still have the day-to-day grind of business-
Right.
...to do while we're also providing this information. So, once again, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of my colleagues in the Internal Audit Committee, and thank you very much, Mr. Tim Edwards.
Yes. Thank you very much.
All right. I don't see any other lights. Ms. Mays, this is an action item. Is there anything else you'd like to?
Yes, and, excuse me, as I cleared my throat, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the report for our audit as stated.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mrs. Mays, a second by Mrs. Hudson, to approve the fiscal year 1617 independent audit. No further lights indicating discussion. Please vote. Okay, so next on our agenda, we come to discussion action items. One item tonight is considering the 2018 legislative agenda, the interim legislative agenda. Dr. Cavazos?
Thank you, President Raish. And at this time, we'd like to discuss our interim legislative agenda, a draft, and Ms. Powell has, I think, a starting point. I think everybody has the agenda on, has been delivered to them. And so we've met with the committee and had some input from David Anderson as well, from Hillco, and Cindy?
Yes, President Raish, Board members, Dr. Cavazos. We do have for your consideration, your discussion and consideration this evening, a draft of an interim legislative agenda for 2018. This Board has become very engaged in recent years in the legislative process, very much to the benefit of our district. This is something that frankly, until about six years or so ago, we were not very engaged in, but we have taken this on, and I think each year do better and do more. And so it's something that I'm very proud of. Between legislative sessions, a lot of work does take place. There are interim charges given to the Senate, interim charges given to the House. There are many legislative committee meetings that are held, and discussions to prepare reports back to the legislature in anticipation of the upcoming session. These hearings, these reports become the basis of bills that will be filed in the upcoming session. So we very much have to also be engaged in these interim periods, even when the legislature is not in session. So we have drafted an interim legislative agenda for your consideration. The administration drafted it with input from several departments. We had a lot of input, significant discussion and input with our Board Governance Committee, and also with our legislative consultant with Hillco and David Anderson. I will tell you that we have three primary objectives with this particular interim agenda, and they are local control, relevant instructional programs that reflect the intent of House Bill 5 that was passed by the 83rd legislative session, and suitable funding with no unfunded mandates. Then, we get into specifics. We actually have four broad categories of items that are included in our agenda. They start with academic accountability, then they branch to school finance, school choice, and then finally, pre-K. And so a lot of these are items that were on our agenda for the legislative process this last spring, and we've carried them forward, we've modified them in some cases, and we've added a couple. So with that, I'd be happy to turn it over to the Governance Committee for their comment, and we can answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Powell, and, oh, Dr. Raish, am I okay?
Yeah, go right ahead.
She pointed at it.
I'm sorry.
We were reading each other, Ms. Powell.
Yes, we were.
We just ignored Dr. Raish, so don't worry about it. Thank you, Dr. Raish. Didn't mean to take the floor out of turn, but I've done it before, and I try not to do it. So let me thank Ms. Powell and staff as we worked on this, as Chair of the Governance Committee with Ms. Walton and Mr. Chapa, and almost every single Board member up here has served on this in the past to work on the legislative process. As Ms. Powell said, this is a constant bouncing ball, I think is the way to describe it, of changes. In the interim, we used to not do interim agendas. The interim's when all the work gets done. It's when we start our blocking and tackling and figuring out what's going to happen for the upcoming session. Because even though it seems like we just finished session, which we did, luckily, it's only every other year for 140 days, especially with the special, special session. 2018 comes, and 2018 goes really fast, and then we're back in in 2019 in January. So before we know it, in a little over a year, we will have another legislative session where they can wreak havoc on everything we do, and require our students to follow things that we don't believe, as a Board and the community doesn't believe. So I appreciate all the work we've done. As Ms. Powell mentioned, a lot of this is a carryover of what we've been working on our legislative agenda, with a couple additional items we've added in. Of course, as Ms. Powell mentioned, our main things are local control, relevant instruction, and unfunded mandates. We have over $75 million in unfunded mandates that come into our budget of over $500 million. So you can imagine what could happen with those dollars if they actually funded things they required us to do. Some of the big things for this Board to be focused on, and I'm very clear on the legislative agenda, to make sure people understand, we're not covering everything. So if we're missing something, we may be missing it intentionally. There's also other things that'll come up that we weren't sure of. As a Board, we can always go back and add anything we'd like to do in this, but there is reason and intent of going after targeted items that we're working on. So what are some of those targeted items? Some of the big things, you know, how do we remove high-stakes testing? How do we make permanent graduation committees, which have been very successful to help our students get out? How do we adapt to A through F? Because it used to be repeal, well, now it's here. So now, what are we going to do? How do we adapt to that? Under school finance, a big thing that's going to be coming this interim is the School Finance Commission. The School Finance Commission being appointed is going to review, because everyone, at least something everyone in the state agrees on, is school finance is broken, and the system's one of the most confusing systems out there. I know all of us have spent there, have spent countless hundreds of hours, and it's very difficult to understand. When you talk to legislators, they understand even less, and that's a little scary, when you have legislators who have to master so many different things to understand a very complicated school finance system. So there's trepidation around the School Finance Commission. I'm glad they're at least having a discussion about school finance to bring that up. Some of the other things we focused on is what are we doing for our teachers? TRS active care, as we know, we've talked up here as a Board, it is at almost unlivable wages and cost for our teachers to have TRS active care. Of how do we provide that and give our teachers the same piece that someone working for the Department of Motor Vehicles gets the same insurance? And they're not. And that's pretty sad, when you think about it from a teacher's standpoint. But then we also talk about TRS. To make sure our system, our teachers have paid into this for so long, is funded properly. When our teachers retire, and then what's happening to our current retirees? Our current retiree healthcare, it's almost better if they have a spouse on it to leave the plan from what's happening on that. So what are we doing for actives and for our retirees to fund that? We talk about local control, as we mentioned, unfunded mandates, but then there's also something that we, full disclosure, missed last session. We wish we'd gotten on, tagged on to a bill, but our junior colleges did it better. But how do we, how are we able to invest our funds? You know, use that Gas Well money to perpetually fund items for teachers, for staff, to bring those in, and give us a little more flexibility that other entities within the state of Texas have the access to, but they don't allow school districts that flexibility and local control. And then, of course, we get into school choice, opposing privatization, non-accountable organizations that are allowing school choice with no accountability. For, we've been a school district of choice for many, many years, as long as I can remember. But then we talk about, why haven't they increased transportation funding? Because last time it changed was 1984. We get funded 2-point-something million, and we spend over $10 million a year on transportation. And if you want to talk real school choice, you better talk transportation to really give kids an opportunity. And then we get into the last, and maybe one of the most important, is pre-K. How are our students prepared to come in? Because you hear about employers say, and colleges say, "Well, your kids are graduating high school, not ready for college." I would sit there and say, "Some of our teachers are graduating college, not ready for teaching careers." But then I would more importantly say, "We have preschoolers coming in, not ready for kindergarten." And we're already starting off behind the eight ball. You talk to anyone about pre-K, and you see the importance, you can see every stat of what it does for a young man or woman that comes in. That child who may not know their colors going into kindergarten, how much farther behind are they than the ones who do? So as we look at this legislative agenda, it's not going to cover everything. It's a very targeted approach to go after. We invite the Governance Committee, we'll be having meetings with all of our local legislators. We'll also be tracking down in Austin a fair amount to determine who we think could be the new Speaker of the House, which then determines who's chairs of all the different committees, and what happens in Senate races that are coming up for this future. But we would encourage, when we have these meetings with all the legislators, to start discussing what can be done, inviting all of the Board in any time possible to make sure we go. And even if we have more than three, I'd say, "Let's call a sometimes open meeting and have a meet, and bring them into our schools." We talked about bringing these legislators into our schools, to let them make sure they see the great work our teachers and our students are doing. So I think we've got a good plan. I commend this Board for being very proactive in this approach, because I can't say a lot of our colleagues around the state are doing interim legislative agendas. And we were one of those Boards a long time ago. I think the first time we created a legislative agenda, Dr. Raish and I just went online and found some other legislative agendas and said, "Hey, this one looks good. Let's go with that one." So we've really evolved as we come, and I commend this Board for all the work on this legislative agenda, and having this approved, and moving forward to fight the good fight, which sometimes when you're dealing with Austin, the word "fight" is not inappropriate to use. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and, and to the Governance Committee as well, which is Ms. Walton and Mr. Chapa, correct? Yeah. So, yeah, tremendous work. I've got a few other words and a question, but Ms. Walton, I see your light.
Thank you, President Raish. Yes, Bowie, well said, and thank you, Ms. Powell, for doing such a great job and working with Hillco to, to really make this tight and, and very forceful in its words. I just want to reiterate one point that Bowie made very well, but just to accent it, and that is to oppose any legislation that diverts public funds to private institutions that are not accountable to the public taxpayer for the use of those funds, I think is, is really key. Several of us have just come back from the Council of Great City Schools in Cleveland, and visiting with people from other districts where this has happened. It is, yes, all around the country. This has impacted a lot of districts in very negative ways with what is, what happens to their enrollment. And we just can't let that happen. We've got too many good things going on here in Arlington that are doing wonderful things for kids that they need to be here to, to receive and have access to. So I just want to kind of reiterate, we're going to fight the, I'm ready to redouble the efforts on fighting, and that's the word, any attempt to, to divert those, those public funds to private institutions. So thank you very much for letting me get on that soapbox, and thank you all again for all your, all your help.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. I appreciate the comments, and I think there's something to be said, not just about the impact that they're feeling in other districts nationally on the enrollment decline, but I would think the vast majority of those experiments are showing that it's not really in the best interest of the student as far as the outcomes, and that's our, our key focus here as well.
Can I say one more thing? In a session, and it is such a problem, because most of the charters are in, taking the elementary children, and then they come back into the public schools for secondary, junior high, and high school. And the kids were coming in so underprepared that one district in Ohio had literally taken the charter schools under their wing to try to improve the curriculum and the education in those charter schools, which, I mean, they're doing the same thing twice. You know, they're spending public money twice to get the same, the same benefit as I see it. So it's, it's critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hudson? Mrs. Hudson?
Thank you, President Raj. First of all, I want to commend the Legislative or the Governance Committee. I know that a tremendous amount of work goes in before this ever comes before us, a lot of discussion. And I think that overall, this is a really concise, plain English. You know, you can take a look at it and read through it and understand exactly what our priorities are. And it doesn't get off into the weeds too much. I think it really says exactly what it needs to say. We are really, really blessed on this board. Mr. Hogg, President Raj, Ms. Walton and Mr. Hibbs, I know, are extremely knowledgeable about our state legislators and about how that whole process works and about how that rebounds on our district. And I really am grateful for your leadership in making sure that we're as proactive as we can be with our state legislators in addition to being proactive with our community and engaging our community to partner with us in reaching out to our legislators as well. So, with that, I just have a couple of questions slash concerns about just some of the little stuff that's in here. So, first, on pre-K, early education is definitely a passion of mine. So, currently, it's a grant program. When we're requesting that they provide weighted funding through the Foundation School Program, we're asking them to essentially remove that from a grant program, remove the ifs or how much it's going to be, and just really fully fund pre-K. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct. As a grant, it has been a competitive application process. And our position is that all students should be entitled to pre-K and services. And so, we'd like to see the state fund that through the state funding system, just like they do any other education program for students K through 12.
And by doing that, we would be able to open up pre-K not just to the limited number of kids who are allowed to take it without paying right now, but to every child in Arlington?
Right. So, I do want to clarify, we get some funding from the state through the foundation program, but it's not weighted. And really, what this asks for is weighted funding to recognize the fact that in a pre-K classroom, we have to have not only a teacher, but a TA. So, there's an incremental cost, just like you would have with special ed, say, for example, where you may have a teacher and a TA in the classroom. So, what we've asked for here is weighted funding. And then also, as an option, should we have the capacity, the physical space, to offer full-day services, fund us for the full-day program, make that an option, but not a mandate?
Fully high five on that, yeah. Okay. On the very first page, under our objectives, this is a new portion from last year. The third one says, "AISD believes that suitable funding for mandated state requirements should be required or that unfunded state mandates be eliminated." It concerns me a little bit that we would be advocating for these state mandates to be eliminated as opposed to just requesting the funding because some of the state mandates are very research-based and I think things that we would not necessarily want to reverse in this district just because we lack the funding to be able to carry it through. Class size for K through four, PE classes, I recognize that these are unfunded mandates, but they're for the benefit of the kids and not necessarily something that we would reverse. Did you guys think about just putting it out there that we are underfunded for the amount of requirements that are put on us and what we're being asked to do in teaching these kids and just leave it at, they should provide suitable funding, period?
And we have that kind of conversation every year as we build our legislative agenda. And we're always very clear that some mandates are good and we agree that there are some things that are good. We simply do think that they need to be funded. But we have let this as somewhat an open choice, either fund the mandate and we'll carry on with it or at the very least, not mandate it, not mandate that we spend money on something in particular.
And Ms. Hudson, I remind you on this agenda, we're presenting this and you're playing a little politics. As much as sometimes we forget, we're elected officials, they're definitely elected officials. So, having to give them that and say, here's the unfunded mandate. So, even if they don't require mandates, doesn't mean we, as a district, don't have to make that choice. Our option here is saying, you're forcing this on us without any funding. So, either take it away and let us have control and we can decide. Because there's a lot of things we do as a district that aren't required by the state of Texas that we believe is important for this district. And some of those things you mentioned, I fully agree with you 100% on. But to some of these legislative officials, they're requiring, and the whole point of this is kind of a general purpose of, don't pass and require us to do things because we know we're probably not going to get a lot of relief from current unfunded mandates. This is probably more of a defensive mechanism to say, don't pass anything new in unfunded mandates. And it's worked over the last couple of years. We've actually had a small reduction in our unfunded mandates from 83 million to 75 million, not a big one that's required. But requiring them and the discussion in the legislature is more, they are more cautious now over unfunded mandates. And I think that is directly associated from districts like ourselves and others around the state pushing on unfunded mandates because they are definitely more aware of those things that come in. So, I agree with you, there's some mandates that are good, they're unfunded. But I think my approach is, you either fund it or don't require it mandated on anything you do currently, which they're probably not going to give us much relief, but definitely to make sure nothing new comes in as an unfunded mandate.
So, yeah, when you say that, that makes a lot more sense. When I read it, it seems like we're asking them to eliminate current mandates rather than refrain from putting out any other mandates without also funding them as well, providing funding.
We are.
Is there a way to play with that?
We do say in here, "And not add additional unfunded mandates," that is part of that item. Under local control, under number three.
In the text of it?
Provide relief from current unfunded mandates and not add additional unfunded mandates.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, and I did see that down there. I guess, to me, it just leaves me concerned that someone would come in with a deregulation mindset and just say, well, now you don't have to do it. Well, we're going to choose to do it anyway, so funding it is the better option. So, I don't know, to me, I'm a little uncomfortable with that verbiage.
I would say asking for money is always the hardest thing to do in a district and it's probably the last thing we're going to get from them. If they came to us with those options, I would say, good for us, it's more local control, which is what our agenda is based around and we'd rather regulate. Because good for us if a state doesn't require something and we say, here's what we're going to need on our class-size mandates. I think it's good to let a local control focus on that. So, I would sit there and say, you're going to give me relief on any of those, I'll take them. I'll take them every such, each way, which probably won't happen. But it also is sending a big message to them about unfunded mandates. I think this verbiage has been pretty consistent in years past and I think it's I think it's worked fairly well on getting the message across to legislators.
Our preference would always be flexibility in spending the dollars they give us rather than having them fund mandates. So, I think that this allows a little room for that.
Yeah. Well, and when you get down into the details, you know, I see the freedom to spend state comp ed funds. I mean, I definitely understand where you're coming from on that. I just think the verbiage on that is very risky, but that's just my thoughts. On the second page, there's a bit, so we've gone into quite a bit of detail about our concerns about the A through F and within academic accountability and what we would like to see that system turn out to be, kind of our request as they're going through their conference or whatever it is that it's called. But then we've added this part here on page two. "Stability and continuity of any accountability system are necessary for stakeholders to develop an understanding of the system and confidence in the ratings it yields. Once the new system is fully defined and the indicators formalized, the system should be allowed to take root without change in order to foster understanding and credibility of the system." This causes me concern as well because I really, I don't know that there's very much that they could do that would give me a lot of confidence in A through F. And to advocate then that they let it stick around, no matter how flawed it is, again, is treacherous waters. I'm not sure that I fully back that.
So, we've had a conversation on this with our legislative consultant. And what we have found over many, many years is that the state rarely leaves the accountability system alone for more than a year or two. And then it's very hard for stakeholders to take data and compare to the prior ratings, the prior assessments to determine what kind of progress is being made. And so, a suggestion from our legislative consultant was putting this statement where we did in particular in here to stay, let it become a little stable. Don't just continue to change it every year such that no one can gain any traction and any understanding of what progress is truly being made.
So, do we feel like A through F will turn out to be something that's actually reflective of our school's performance and actually informing the public about something that should take root?
Well, and so, one of the things we do ask for in here is definition around each of those grade levels and some way to differentiate within a grade what the performance actually is, which is very similar to slightly different wording, though, than we had in the last agenda, which was, instead of an A to F system, allow us to have an index scaled scores. And so, this is, while we didn't get that, we do have A to F, but there is a recommendation in here that the state define each of those grades and then allow for some differentiation so that you do have a better sense of the specific performance of a campus.
So, Ms., if I could just help clarify for you, the statement that has been added in here is not specific to A through F only. It's more broad-based accountability versus a rating system. It's, A through F is part of that, but there's other details within the state's accountability system. So, I think that's the intent of this paragraph. It's not just a focus on A through F because, yeah, I don't think anybody likes what A through F is and we don't want it to change. We want it to, or we don't want it to stay the same, we want it to change or go away.
The purpose is more around the constant changing of accountability systems. No one likes A through F, but the constant change is even worse than what they're giving us for a method and system.
I would say, for me to be comfortable with it, what I'm hearing is that if they do everything that's on page one, we feel like A through F will be a less flawed system and able to perhaps function in the way that they intend for it to. And if that's the case, if those requirements are met, then we would ask them to hold steady and let it take root and not just change it in two years so that no one has a baseline and a way to show improvement. Am I understanding that premise correctly?
Somewhat.
I think so. I think, though, that, again, whatever the system is, let's let it be stable. We had a very similar request even after House Bill 5 passed, different issue. But our ask then was, let this take hold, let it become stable. Don't just continue to modify it such that it can't ever take hold and people can't be comfortable with it. So, I don't know that we would get everything that you see there on page one, but I do think that one of the things that would help the overall system is some stability there.
Could we add a qualifier in there? Something to the effect of, if the A through F accountability system can be proven to be reflective of district performance, then we would request some stability?
Ms. Hudson, we have in there designed the system in a manner that appropriate recognizes demographic variables across the district.
Right. So, that's where my if-then is coming in. What I don't see in this final statement is the if-then. What I see is, regardless of how flawed it is, we would ask for some stability and continuity. And what I'm asking for is just a qualifier so that anyone who reads this understands that we don't support the A through F system as it currently stands. These are the changes that we're requesting at a bare minimum for the standards for it to meet before it goes into effect. And then if it can meet those standards, then we would like to see it be stable for a little while. What I'm not reading is the if-then statement that's implied. Does that make sense?
It does. And I think absolutely if that's something that the board wants us to change, we can make that change.
So, I, I don't think we want to go through and figure out how to wordsmith this in detail. I have a suggestion. Under that statement, would it work for stability and continuity of an acceptable accountability system are necessary?
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine, this is a discussion-action item tonight. I'm fine if everybody just speaks their mind and if the Governance Committee wants to take it back and speak with David Anderson and get his feedback on some of the thoughts that are shared this evening. To me, I wasn't looking to make some formal amendments to this this evening and try to push it through unless that's what, you know, Mr. Hogg and Ms. Walton would like to do. But I trust the committee to do the work. I just wanted to share my feelings as a fresh eyes. When I read through this, these are some of the things that, this is how it comes across to me. And I think, you know, clearly, the intention of the if-then, I think it would be helpful if that was
I would also recommend, anytime, we can go back and make a quick amendment to this throughout the process because I think as we get into discussions, because as we said, this is not an exact science document. This is a general topic discussion, conversation piece with legislators. As we have those discussions with our legislators, maybe they're having parts with that. Maybe they're having trouble and we go back and change it. I probably am going to counter you and say, I was of the belief of, leave it alone. If you're going to give us a sorry system, at least if you're not going to change it, which we're asking for on the previous page, at least let us know what field we're playing on. Because nothing worse than having rules and then the rules change and they're even worse than what they are from what they are. So, half the time, the legislature's better if they do nothing at all than when they do something. The less bills they pass, usually the better shape we are as an entity. The less they pass, the better we end up.
And I guess I would just be, I don't think it would be wise for us as a board to give our endorsement of a system that we think is fundamentally flawed and not reflective of our students' performance and our school's performance. I think under no circumstances should we endorse that.
I don't read this as a endorsement. So, if there's different intent, I don't read it as that. But it's all about people read and understand that.
So, I have some additional questions. So, today at the Council of PTAs, I learned that they have a legislative person who sort of creates an agenda for them and that they can request to have a legislative representative at each one of the campuses. And that led me to wonder, with whom do we liaison and share this and try to sort of find what are the commonalities so that when we're talking with our representatives, they're hearing some similar stuff from the district, from the PTAs, from the schools, that kind of thing?
So, we do present this to the Council of PTAs, we do present this to the Retired Teachers Association, we present it to all the legislators. And many times, PTA members have been sent down to Austin and we will brief them to help them understand what some of our agendas are so that they can go in prepared and to say, here's what they have of some correlations. Because it's definitely more powerful when you can go in and say, we, as a PTA unit, believe this and here's what our district believes also at the same time. Does it happen that often? No. Should happen, would I like for it to happen more? Yes, of course. The same thing works with groups like the Texas School Alliance. Same thing works with the Texas Association of School Boards, Texas Association of School Administrators. We definitely try and correlate those things together because the more people you have barking, the better. For example, TRS active care. We need to find a couple other districts who are going to jump on board and 100% go in with us to go after this and attack it. El Paso ISD could be one of those. It's a good district to help understand and provide. Because then what that means is more legislators around the state are focused than the ones just in your area from what's coming in and you hear about it a little more. So, yes, 100% correlating between those groups is 100% critical from what we do. Most of them haven't created interim agendas, they're just starting. Example, TASB just at our last convention, we just had, passed our legislative priorities. Just so they're passed and they're probably one of the first ones that out. Texas School Alliance, that our superintendent serves as the president, current president? Just past president. Luckily, that takes a lot of relief off y'all. Look, Ms. Powell, luckily, on there, as y'all serve as president. We'll have a legislative agenda probably passed pretty quick to start giving the focus and bringing those in. So, yes, 100% try and correlate with other groups. We're never going to match with all the other groups.
Sure.
We're going to have pieces here and there. We're not going to match with our districts sometimes, but definitely the more we have correlated with each other, the better.
And we also work and present this to our Chamber of Commerce and to the city council, mayor. So, yeah, the, one of the things I find very satisfying with having an interim agenda similar to what Mr. Hogg said is, most don't. And so, we're kind of taking the lead there and kind of guiding and sharing the guiding principles for those agendas. And then you take a group like the chamber, well, they work with their other chambers as well around the state. So, our agenda really work with their other chambers as well around the state. So our, our agenda really has gotten some good play around the state.
And I'd like to share that even today I've had an email exchange with the Chamber about interim charges to the House Public Ed Committee where they were reaching out to me and asking if there was anything that we needed them to monitor on our behalf. And I shared with them that we would be adopting or discussing tonight a, an interim agenda. I also shared that one of the things that I have most appreciated in the last several years from the agenda, or from the Chamber, is that they are very good about contacting us and asking for our opinion before they take a position with the broader statewide group that they're members of with Metro 8. And, and so I asked that they please continue to do that even through the interim session. And so I'll be sharing our interim agenda once it is adopted back with them and we'll continue those helpful conversations.
And Ms. Hudson, on, on your recommendation, I would be more than willing, and I think Dr. Reich had a good recommendation, of stay building continuity of any acceptable accountability system. I'd be willing to amend it to, to add that word. And then I would make the recommendation, if, if the board's ready, I, I would say, let's go ahead and vote on this because then we're going to start scheduling meetings with legislators to test it out a little bit somewhat and have those discussions. If in two weeks we see something else and we need to amend it, we can add it back to the agenda. And I would be more than willing to support that and put it back on the agenda and vote on it in two weeks if we need to amend it, which always can be done.
Appreciate that. One more question. So generally speaking, what I've noticed is that our, our focus is really on state advocacy, which makes sense because education is really a state sort of wheelhouse. But I have also learned that some of the changes going on in Washington, particularly ones that can affect Medicare, would in fact affect a very significant source of revenue for us and really be extremely impactful on some of our most vulnerable students here in Arlington. I'm wondering if the Governance Committee has thought about putting together even just a, a statement of position that we put on our website, share with people, that we can maybe just reach out as individuals to our state senators and state representatives. Is that, is that anything that's in the works?
I, I think it's a fine idea. I think it'd be very condensed. Just sometimes you have to divide and conquer of what you're tackling. And if I thought nothing got done in Austin, wait till we see what happens in DC, right? So, but there's definitely some items. Grant funding is a big item, Title I funding. Some of those pieces are even probably a bigger issue that directly affects our school for after-school care, some of those type of pieces, which are probably going to lose funding before long. And, and those are things that aren't directly with our funding, but they directly affect our students. So having some of those items, in full disclosure, probably not a huge amount of advocacy from this board because I do think the bigger bang for our buck is targeting Austin with more rules and legislation, but definitely having it posted. Lewis Felice is one who has some federal recommendations. There's a couple of other districts that have some federal pieces on there. Our legislative consultants definitely don't work in the DC environment, usually have to hire two different people. And I probably wouldn't recommend making that kind of exchange. But I think it's a fair idea and I would be more than willing to volunteer our Governance Committee to go back and say, what are some recommendations we could have for, and they don't have interims. They're always in session. Unfortunately, they're always in session in DC, voting on who knows what, but they're voting on something some days, so.
We, we do leverage through the, the Texas School Alliance. We have a, a federal advocacy effort through them and that is one of the things that the School Alliance is actually working on right now is our goals.
And TASB and TAS also do some federal.
And including federal goals. And so we do advocate actively through the School Alliance at the federal level.
That's good.
I, I, I think we could ask, put that on our next governance item. And I, I don't think it's quick in the process, but over the next month or two, adding a couple of items that we believe in from a federal standpoint.
Well, I definitely appreciate the Governance Committee's hard work and on really all the detail that's in here. Big high five. So with that, I would like to move that with the amendment proposed by Dr. Reich, that we approve this interim agenda.
I'll second that. And let me clarify that amendment. Ms. Hudson, just to make sure, adding the word stability and continuity of any acceptable accountability system.
Thank you.
Okay. So there's a motion by Mrs. Hudson. Is there a second?
I second that.
Oh, you second. Sorry. Okay. Second by Mr. Hogg. I don't see any lights indicating further discussion. I, I do want to say thank you for all the work on the federal level. Check with the, the great city schools. They've got resources as well. So, and yeah, this is, this is a fluid thing. This is a conversation starter. And I really appreciate you guys putting the work in and getting it out there so that we can have the conversation and get our, our teachers, our parents, our community all talking about these priorities. The only other thing I would mention is be prepared that the local control, as we saw in the last session, was spun away from what we look at as local control versus the, the technical state interpretation of local versus federal. So just keep that in mind. So with, and no further lights, please vote. All right. Motion carries. We have our interim legislative agenda. Thank you, Ms. Powell, for the time. And I guess don't go too far, right?
Stay right here.
So we have items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda first. Is there any items to be withdrawn? Okay. So then we will move on to considering the items listed on the consent agenda. And Ms. Powell?
We have four bids on the agenda this evening. And in all cases, administration is recommending lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district. We also have donations for your consideration this evening. The donations being reported tonight total $100,217. And that brings our year-to-date total to $294,994.
Excellent. Excellent. Very good. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda items. Second.
Okay. A motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mrs. Mays. I don't see any lights indicating further discussion. Please vote. Consent passes. Thank you. Moving on to discussion items, the first one is the strategic plan year one review. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we'd like to present year one of our strategic plan and a review of the strategies that have been accomplished. We're one year into our strategic plan. And so I think it's important, you've, you've received updates in the past. It's important to wrap up the one year. And Dr. Wertz is going to go through every one-year strategy in an efficient way to get us through a review of what happened in year one. And know that we're actively working year two and you will get an update about, in a quarterly review of year two. So.
Dr. Wertz? So I'll give the board opportunity to load up on some coffee real quick for Dr. Wertz. Just kidding.
Feel free. Can you bring me a cup too? No, just kidding. President Reich, members of the board, Dr. Kavassos, thank you for letting me be here tonight to share with you our review of year one of the strategic plan. Before I get started on the details, I want to first acknowledge the hard work of the team. I happen to be the designated to share the details of the work tonight, but I'm certainly not the only one that's working through this plan. It comes from every department across the district, many that are sitting up there, some that are sitting behind me. And so I just want to say, extend our sincere gratitude and appreciation for the, all the effort that they put into making sure that our students have a meaningful experience here in Arlington. So with that being said, I'm going to share with you a year one review. And I, I just want to remind everybody that we came halfway through the year and provided an update. And so this is a, the, kind of a final update about where we are from the last time I spoke with you to today, just to kind of give you some details. Of course, as you know, having created the strategic plan, there are way more details or weeds in the details than I'll be able to share with you here tonight. But my intent is to try, try to provide you with an overview of where we are and give you some ideas of what are some of the next steps that we're kind of working on. So just for the sake of the audience, I wanted to start off by reiterating that the strategic plan was founded and based on core beliefs. And those beliefs in Arlington are founded on this idea that we believe that our, our success actually depends on having this vision that's clear and focused, that it's founded on principles of effective leadership and teaching, that we believe in this idea of continuous improvement and try to foster that in all, all parts of our culture, and that we do believe that an engaged community that we serve helps us in our process to make sure that our students are, are able to excel. This is a, a copy of our vision, mission, and goal. And I, I just point out that in the last revision of the strategic plan, that the board adopted a singular goal for students to graduate exceptionally prepared for college, career, and citizenship. And you should see the efforts that we're going to outline or discuss tonight, articulating how we are trying to reach that goal. So there are four performance categories, objective categories in the design of the strategic plan. Those are academic achievement, college readiness, workforce readiness, leadership, citizenship, and responsibility. And it is the intent that if we reach our strategies or our, our, the strat, if the, we accomplish all the strategies that are connected to each one of these performance objective categories, that we will be able to obtain or reach the measures that would actually create an exceptionally prepared Arlington ISD student. So tonight I'm going to share with you a review of the strategies in each of the, each of the categories that were part of year one. But I, not every category was addressed in year one, and we're going to talk a little bit, a little bit about that tonight. So for the sake of the audience, I thought I would share a little bit, a reminder about how the strategic plan came to be and including the timeline. And since we're only talking about year one, I, I thought I would explain why that's the case. There were teams of people that gathered together to identify strategies that were connected to each of the individual performance objectives, things that we wanted to accomplish with kids. And then we deconstructed those standard, those strategies into smaller chunks so that we could sequence them. Our goal was to try to identify where the high-impact strategies were so that we can see how many there were and spread them out strategically over the course of the five years. And that's simply a matter of capacity. As you'll, none of, the strategies and the order in which they're, they're being worked on is not an indication of priority or of one being more important than the other. It's literally just a matter of sequencing them in a natural order so that things build on each other and also to ensure that we have the capacity to do that. When we identified the high-impact strategies, we looked at things that had system-wide impact on our human capital, on our finances, and also our ability to accomplish the task with time, time constraints. And so you'll notice that the ones that we considered high-impact were strategically designed to be placed over the course of the five years so you don't have all the, the most high-impact levers being pulled at the same time where we wouldn't have the capacity to do them well. The parameters of the sequencing that I was describing is that the goal was to have no more than 25% of the plan in any one singular year, that we would have, in fact, stretch those high-impact strategies over four, over the first four years, and then that we would ensure that we were able to do activities that needed foundational work first and then build from that point forward so we didn't kind of get ahead of ourselves. So this year in year one, there were, there was one strategy that was being addressed in college readiness, eight strategies in academic achievement, and two strategies in leadership, citizenship, and responsibilities. And I'll share with you some details around each one of those. In academic achievement, we worked on finalizing our curriculum management system. We worked on developing and writing and revising our curriculum. So we worked specifically on grades three through eight and EOC courses in core content areas. And in those new documents, we outlined instructional approaches, learning targets, formative assessments. The document themselves actually looked very different than they did before, and they're much more streamlined and user-friendly. We also worked on an assessment of policy and procedures, and I'm going to share with you a little bit about where we are with that tonight and including some of the carryover work. We worked on evaluation of programming, including the implementation of a policy that the board had previously adopted. We looked at developing a user-friendly data management system so that teachers would have access and principals would have access to data that they could interpret it in, in leverage to take action and to ensure our students were making progress. We worked on a, a professional learning plan that was system-wide. HR went through a reorganization that included employee relations, recruiting, comp and benefits, and customer service, so four core department areas. And then we also had instructional responses to each of our bond initiatives. STEM labs were, are an example. The Fine Arts Dual Language Academies are an example. So in essence, every time there was a bond initiative that had an instructional implication, there was an instructional response and programming that had to be done. We also worked in college readiness in the initial launch of our redesign for gifted and talented program. And then finally, we worked on a few things connected to promoting the emotional and physical safety of our students and the environments that they're taught in, really promoting a comprehensive communications plan. And then the last item here, and the reason why it's bolded, is customer service. This was an area actually part of year two, but we felt like it was a high-impact opportunity to start in year one. And so tonight, actually at the, as I get towards the end of the presentation, I'll be inviting Ms. Brown, who led that charge, to kind of give you a, a little more in-depth highlight around what the work was around customer service specifically. In the middle of the school year last year, we stopped for a moment and we provided you some highlights. We dove deep around the active learning cycle as one of our initiatives connected to the curriculum revision. We talked about our work with ensuring that our students who are underrepresented in our high-leverage academic courses like AP and IB, what we were doing with equal opportunity schools to make sure that those students are being captured and given an opportunity to be served in those programs. And then we also shared with, with the board some details specifically about the curriculum rewrite and the revision process. So those were the kind of the deep dives that we did mid-year. So today, I won't be going deeply into each of those because we, that would be a repeat to the, the areas that we shared before, but we will be sharing you highlights and some of those items will come back up again. And then I, like I said a few minutes ago, Ms. Brown will dive deep around customer service. So in connection to the student assessment policy and procedures, the, the Department of Research and Accountability collaborated with the University of Texas Arlington to conduct a literature review. And in essence, what we were trying to find out was what is the research saying about assessments in general? And how can you leverage assessments to really help students grow and improve in the teaching and learning process? And there were specific questions that we were trying to identify answers to in that process. What does it mean to learn to mastery? How do you, how do you measure that? What are some quality characteristics that should be embedded as part of an assessment and accountability system? How do you, what are high, what is high-stakes testing? I think that's a miss, it's a concept that's misunderstood a lot across the country. We wanted to identify what specifically characterizes a high-stakes test so that we could think about that in terms of our, our policy in general. And then also the similarities and difference between different types of assessments, performance-based assessments, standardized assessments, multiple-choice assessments. There's multiple ways to assess a child's learning. It doesn't have to be paper-pencil. So we wanted to dig into a little bit about what the literature says about that. So some of the next steps that that department is working on is continuing to vet out the, an assessment philosophy. We've been working with a cross-section of stakeholders to help design what that philosophy could be and then recommend possibly a policy for the board to consider that's connected to the use of assessments in, in the teaching and learning process. The, the, the Department of Research and Accountability is also conducting several informational meetings with various stakeholders to gather insights and input. And to be honest with you, those meetings are, they're kind of twofold. One is to get input, but it's also to build some awareness and some understanding about the role of assessments in the teaching and learning process. For program evaluations, back in October 2015, the board adopted BI Local, which was a new policy that specified the need for program evaluations. And we outlined a plan where we would have specific programs be evaluated on a cycle of every five years. In 2016-17, we concluded an evaluation for the course in eighth grade, the CTEI course. And we also have preliminary results on the Guidance and Counseling Program as well as bilingual ESL programming. Some of the things that we're considering right now is our capacity and the district needs. How do we prioritize which program evaluations should come in front of other ones based upon the needs that we have to, or information that we need in terms of our design. And then also the capacity that we have to, you know, to get through the number of evaluations that we want to conduct. We had to actually define for ourselves what specifically is a program and identify what, how fast we could go and how many we could actually conduct in a year in a meaningful way. And so we, we are in the process of revising and updating our, our schedule for program evaluations just so that we can meet not only the demand that's needed, but also ensure that the right ones are being evaluated.
Hold on just a moment, Dr. Wertz.
Just a real fast question. Dr. Wertz, you're also evaluating, how will that get reported to us after program evaluations are completed?
We can, when they're finished, we will be sharing them with senior staff and then at, at your direction.
And it, it could either be a written report that goes out to us, or if there, if it's a need, I think, bring it before the whole board agenda.
Okay.
Or a board committee.
Perfect. Make sure that's a focus one way. Thank you.
Sure. One of the other areas that we mentioned earlier that we've been working on is how to create a user-friendly data system. One of the challenges that every teacher struggles with in terms of just time is learning, is managing the data in a way that can inform their instruction in a meaningful way. And so we tried to find a way to get away from... And so we tried to find a way to get away from bunches of spreadsheets where teachers are constantly having to replicate the data that they actually had their hands on. So MyTrack was implemented with classroom teachers across the district, which replaced these manual Excel spreadsheets that were often being used. Also, the department created a simple way, it's a form, a simple way for departments and schools to request specific types of data that they wanted to use to make decisions. And so now they have the ability to actually request a specific set of data that we can then pull. The data warehouse, which is the warehouse for all the data sources that we then use to create visualizations that we can then leverage in the classroom or in our departments, function was moved to Research and Accountability, simply because that department is where all of that pretty much happens in terms of our day-to-day work. And so the idea behind moving the data warehouse function to that department was for us to leverage that data to expand the systems that we have in terms of building tools for campuses and departments and resources to increase our effectiveness. Also, we have met with stakeholders to identify current and future processes that we might need in order to consider governance policies for the use of data here in the district. One area of focus that I just wanted to give you a brief update around was around the instructional model. And this year, we had a pilot in the spring, and this year, in the fall, we launched our first 12 schools that are initiating the active learning cycle. It's important to note, the active learning cycle is only in its first year. The teachers that are doing the active learning cycle have made the decision of their own volition, we're there to support them. And we started the process with a pilot in the spring to get a sense of what kinds of supports would teachers need in terms of implementing this in their classroom. What we've been working on now is curating resources. There are 12 specific best practices that are part of the cycle. And so we are trying to align our resources that seem maybe disjointed to the best practices so people know how best to leverage them. We've also worked on refining our guidance documents, and we'll be doing that even over the course of this school year so that there is more seamless planning in PLCs for teachers so they can marry what happens in the active learning cycle, which is step seven of the Teach for Understanding process, planning cycle that teachers have been working on, which is our instructional model. They can naturally find out where those two things marry. And then finally, we have been working on creating resources and videos and tools that will help support schools in their implementation of the instructional model, as well as receive some guidance in terms of coaching around their implementation of the design in their classrooms so they can help facilitate the ideal experience that we're looking for kids to have. Some of the things the curriculum department is engaged in right now, they're working on is consulting with experts in the field, specifically around balanced literacy. That is a framework that we leverage in our primary grades specifically to teach reading and writing. And so we are in the process right now of redesigning our K-2 curriculum. And so we have leaned into experts in balanced literacy to make sure our documents are aligned to what research says is best practice. We've also been collaborating across our departments, for example, between social studies and language arts in the K-2 curriculum so that we can integrate the standards in those two areas. When you read, you're obviously reading about things that are fiction and nonfiction. And so it's a natural marriage to put social studies in the area of language arts so they can learn both of those things simultaneously. We've also been partnering with the World's Language Department to kind of help us to vet our resources, our instructional resources, and inform our practice as we revise our instructional focus documents in Years at a Glance, specifically for students who are in, you know, bilingual classrooms or those that are ELL learners. Some of the next steps we have to work on now is revise our K-2 rubrics that teachers use to assess students' learning in the classroom, as well as our report cards. Because we have new instructional focus documents, and we have new Year at a Glance, and so once those things occur for the primary grades, then we have to also align the resources to make sure they're connected to one another. Some other revisions, just as an FYI that we're working on, we're revisiting our learning progressions. There are different types of standards. There are process standards, and there are content standards. And students are actually assessed on both. And so we are revisiting where those two things come together. We're also continuing to vet and select and align our instructional resources that are outlined or provided as suggestions in our documents. And then we are revisiting our formative and summative assessments. Inside each of our units of study and our bundles, at each bundle, there is an assessment item that's there that teachers can leverage to get a sense of how their students are mastering content. And so we constantly are trying to improve those and vet those out. Also, one thing that's new is there is a new teacher cadre that's been put together with teachers from across the district to help us as we think about the new curriculum, how's it going, and take suggestions. They are helping us to reexamine our bundling, like how the units are being bundled. They're helping us to revisit our content essentials, which are the texts or the concepts, the critical attributes, the examples that we provide in the documents for teachers as they plan. They're also helping us to revisit the content notes, which are, for example, the approaches, we give them ideas on approaches they can take instructionally with their students. We give them clarifications and things like that in the document. So the cadre is actually helping us to do that. Our goal right now, they are actively working on these revisions, and our goal is that by November 10th, which is just around the corner, I think, next week, all the revisions, the final revisions for this year's fifth and sixth weeks, which are at the end of the school year, will be published online for teachers ready to use. One of the things we've really learned, and we've been really working on, and the department has really been working on, is aligning the professional learning and support that we've been offering from the district level to teachers down in the classroom. And what we do know when it comes to implementation is you can provide all the resources and documents that you want, but what we need to do is make sure that teachers have the support that they need to actualize that in the classroom in their practice. And so what you see up here are four bands of the way that the district is supporting teachers in the classroom. One way is through continuous learning. And so we have, through the Curriculum and Instruction Department, continuous learning opportunities for all K-12 teachers where they can come to professional learning, they can receive guidance on pedagogy and how to use effective techniques in the classroom, how to analyze their data, improve their practice. We also offer curriculum connections. So this year, we have new video, what we call new video previews, where teachers have access to a video presentation that walks them through the instructional focus document for the upcoming six weeks. So it's almost orienting them to the curriculum that they're about to teach before they actually have to do it. We also have taken that to a more personalized level in the secondary schools. So high school and junior high schools have a time in their master schedules where teachers have opportunities to plan. Outside of just the typical planning time, they have an additional period. And so they leverage these often for PLCs. And so now, our curriculum department can join them inside those planning times to give them support specifically on conversations and ideas as they try to develop their lessons for the content they're about to teach. Also, each six weeks, we provide content support for teachers even at the elementary level. And the idea behind this is just to help them deepen their knowledge. You know, you have a new curriculum document. We want to make sure they feel supported, understand the document, and how to actually translate that into instruction in the classroom. One new thing that we're also doing this year in terms of, is what we're calling content series. We have some students, I mean, some schools, that have different needs than other schools. And just like we ask teachers to differentiate for the needs of their students, we try to differentiate for the needs of our campuses. And so we have four major strands. You can see here, for ELA, it's around balanced literacy and the writing process. For mathematics, we are implementing something called Math Solutions. For science, guided inquiry and questioning, how to do that effectively in grades 5'8" and in the biology class in high school. And then finally, the Gilder-Larman Institute of American History Inquiry by Teaching Literacy Through History in Social Studies. And so these content series are being offered, but we provide, to all schools, but we provide designated priority consideration given to the targeted schools because they're the schools that are of greatest need.
Ms. Walton has a question.
Before we move on to the next category, could I just ask a couple of questions about this one particular slide?
Sure.
Okay. My question is, I understand how the day is arranged for secondary people where they do, as you said, have this extra planning period. At the elementary, it states that they will get support and, you know, whatever. How much time are they getting? And where's this time coming from, and how does this work?
I'm going to let Dr. Kennedy tell you the details because she's leading that portion of the work.
Thank you. So for the elementary sessions, those are all either, the content series is actually during the school day. So we may have designated days throughout the year so that there's ongoing professional learning. And it would be just a one day. So we had one at the beginning of the year. We might have another one again around November, and then to carry that over into the spring. And so they're usually just one-days, one-day increments. But I would also say that those are specific to targeted, specific campuses. So it's not all elementary teachers. It would be those specific campuses that we're targeting around some core essential areas for growth and development in terms of either content knowledge or pedagogy. For junior high, what we're doing for junior high and for high school is those sessions are for our content conversations. Those are job embedded. So high school has that as a part of their regular planning period where, once every six weeks, we'll bring groups of teachers together for high school to have those conversations with them, to walk through their content, look at the next six weeks, look at different pedagogy strategies, instructional practices in preparation for the upcoming six weeks. For junior high, since they don't have that embedded into their master calendar for them to have that second period off. So what we're doing with them is working with our principals and utilizing time where we can bring those teachers together, utilizing subs on campus, and being able to bring them together once every six weeks to have those conversations with those junior high school teachers around particular areas to plan for the six weeks. So we kind of have it dependent on the level. For high school, it's job embedded as a part of their regular master schedule. For junior high, it's with a support of substitutes and bringing those together. And at elementary level, we're doing those either after school, or if we're doing specific content series, we're doing that during the school day.
But not at every elementary school?
So for the after-school sessions, they are available to any teacher in the district? For those days that we're pulling teachers together? For writing, it might be for our campuses that have critical writing needs that we're kind of pulling those together. If it's around science, then we would be doing something similar. So we're kind of tailoring it and customizing the support to the campuses that need that particular area.
Okay. Well, here's my concern.
Sure.
I understand that the high schools are regularly, weekly, having time embedded to do this very important work. The junior highs, they're getting something at least once a six weeks. The elementary teachers, maybe three days out of the year. So, you know, unless they want...
Same, so the exact same thing we do for high school and junior high, we do for elementary. So those particular sessions on planning for the upcoming six weeks, we have those prior to every six weeks. They're usually about 10 days, 10 to 15 days before the upcoming six weeks. We have sessions for elementary teachers by grade bands and by content area so that every six weeks, they have opportunities to come together. Those sessions are after school. The specialized content series that I was speaking to is really just for targeted areas to provide additional support. So we do things for everybody, and then we do some targeted.
Yeah, I understand. But the difference that I'm trying to make here is that the elementary teachers are doing this on their own time after school a lot. Okay? In secondary, in high school, and junior highs, those teachers have that time embedded in their day. Okay? My elementary background screams to me that this is just as important a thing for elementary teachers to have advantage of as it is for junior high and high school, you know, people. And I hope that somewhere in all of our plan, you know, we can accomplish that somehow. Because it's important, or we wouldn't be doing it. It's successful at our secondary schools. It would be successful at our elementary if, you know... And the whole, you know, what I'm hearing from elementary teachers is they are just way overloaded. And you ask them to do one more thing after school, and it's like the straw that broke the camel's back. I mean, this required health stuff that they have to be watching. It's only 27 minutes worth of videos, but, you know, it's like, just, you know, 27 more minutes, where am I going to find this? So I'm just trying to make the point here that, please, please, let's start seeing if we can't do something to embed this time for our elementary people to do it. Thank you.
Okay. So the last point that I wanted to make on this slide was on-campus support. So there are some schools who have individualized needs, and so they can make a request directly to the CNI department. And when they receive a request, they have a pre-conference with that school to find out exactly what the need is. And then they develop a plan of action that they provide support around. That support usually lasts a duration of approximately 30 days. And you can see out here on the slide itself, it outlines basically a typical cycle that we go through where it goes from a pre-conference, an observation. They actually plan out what they're going to do, actualize the plan, and then make sure that it's actually meeting the needs of the school. So I will say, when it comes to onsite support, of course, we do provide priority to targeted and essential campuses because those are the ones where the data is showing that they have the greatest need. When it comes to professional learning, the Professional Learning Department has been working with an advisory committee. And the intent behind revisiting with the advisory committee has been to really look at different parts of the professional learning plan that's been developed from this last school year, as well as consider policy development. The Professional Learning Department is an interesting department because they collaborate with every department across the district. They're not responsible for delivering all of the content for professional learning. They're responsible for facilitating it. And so they partner with departments all across the system to really help them to identify what good quality indicators they need to have in place in terms of developing the professional learning they're offering their groups, as well as providing them support on how they can design professional learning in a way that's innovative and which gives some of the end-users choice. One of the things that they've been working on is creating a structure which really helps to give, we're using the word here, agency, but really, it's this idea of choice to educators so they can be self-directed in their learning and have multiple entry points around how they would want to grow professionally. Some of the new models that we're thinking about are how teachers can begin to personalize their learning, deep learning opportunities. And then we've also been thinking about this idea of competency-based learning and even the initiation of micro-credentialing. So how can you learn and gain competencies in very specific areas where we actually micro-credential you here in the district so that we can, you know, one, badge you, so to speak, but also create opportunities for growth and development? And it's a little bit also connected to even our leadership development. HR was recently reorganized. It included 34 total activities that were part of the strategic plan, and all of them were complete. This reorganization developed four distinct departments, employee relations, recruiting, compensation and benefits, and customer service functions. They transitioned from the previous organizational structure, which used to just distinguish elementary, secondary, and then this auxiliary HR functions. And they have moved from this idea of a generalized support to something that's more skill-based within HR functions. Some of the highlights that I wanted to note around HR's redesign is this focus around customer service. This has been supported by, for example, the kiosk. If you've been in our customer service department, you know there's a kiosk there. And that's an opportunity for the staff to be responsive to people, to track how long the wait time is, to make sure that we're meeting their needs. And this function also derives the work they're doing every day. Also, the Employee Relations Generalists now are assigned to very specific groups of schools, and they serve as a coach and mentor to principals and department managers as they try to manage their human resources or the human capital at each of their sites. They have refined some systems specifically for recruiting and staffing. And some examples include the Gallup survey that now principals and teachers take before, as they're going through the application process for us to identify, you know, potential high flyers that are actually applying in our system. And we've also gone to digital interviewing, which is called RIVS interviews. And basically, it allows for managers to begin the process of finding, identifying talent before ever doing a face-to-face interview through a digital process. They have instituted what's called STEADY, which is a substitute training system, which has streamlined the training of substitutes across our district. And they've also implemented Safe Schools Compliance Training, which is a more standardized way of taking some of these courses that are required by state law for all employees. We have undergone and implemented a market... Uh, we have undergone and implemented a market-based salary, uh, a market-based salary schedule that was validated by TASB. And any of our, our modifications to auxiliary employees and bus drivers, those were also made, uh, based on a market-based salary modification that was validated. The, the HR department also recently piloted the implementation of an employee relations tracking system called NAVAX, which is an opportunity for human resources and even department managers or principals to have some kind of real-time communication around employee relations issues that, that they're currently undergoing. They've implemented a district-wide wellness program and also included the implementation of a minimum essential care health plan for substitutes and part-time employees, which is pretty much a, a, a minimum-based kind of employee, uh, healthcare plan that normally where healthcare would not be provided to people because of their status as an employee, they're not a full-time employee and they're not eligible for, um, a typical health plan. So, um, are, we, we have made available a minimum essential care so they have an, they have an opportunity to have some minimal healthcare opportunities. They've also, um, added additional supplemental benefits in, in those, um, benefits that we have as employees, including legal services. If you have a pet, there's pet insurance you can buy now. So there's a variety of supplemental benefits that are now available to employees. Um, we've also, they've also been working, um, hard to ensure that there is resolution around very specific compliance issues like our time card systems, making sure that all the I nine forms are being filled out, that we have trackers on, for, for, for individuals who are on FMLA to make sure that we're meeting timelines and meeting those, those, those needs.
Ms. Walton, you have another clarification?
Uh, yes, clarification. Pilot implementation of employee relations tracking system. Can you explain to me again what that is? It just went right past me.
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you really briefly what I know and then I'm gonna let Scott tell you the details. But, um, it is a, it, it's a new system that allows for there to be more seamless communication between the HR department and the department managers, um, when they're working on investigations or things that are, uh, specifically related to, uh, employee relations on their campus. I don't know if you want to add details?
Uh, Dr. Words did a good job. Real quickly, it's a software program that allows real-time interaction as, um, we're trying to address and resolve issues between the department manager or the campus principal and the HR staff. So they're able to communicate and actually use one database interactively, uh, to both address, resolve, investigate the issue, and then actually produce reporting as well.
So this is like, I'm, I'm trying to picture, so it's like a internal email system or something, or?
It's a little bit like that. It's not an email system per se, it's like an internal database that both the department manager and the HR department have access to on their respective side. So is the HR person's trying to help support. They're not going through phone calls, they're not going through emails, they're actually working in one system, putting in data. They're still going to be face-to-face time, but it, it increases the efficiency and the effectiveness of trying to, to manage those cases and then report on them.
And Mr. Cal, after each session or each investigation, it's tracked and documented in there so that no one's not of the understanding of what's occurring through that process, correct?
That's completely right. And, and frankly, what we're talking about is having gone from doing all this manually in spreadsheets to a pretty slick, um, database that allows an increase in efficiency and effectiveness.
Okay. So what, uh, can you, I don't know, you might not be able to, but-
Hold on, Ms. Walton, Dr. Cavassos wanted to- From a, from a system level, because we, the, a lot of these, um, these strategies are wonderful and they have a lot of detail on, on the strategic plan. So maybe from the system level for this, this particular item, and then we can talk a little bit maybe about the, the one Dr. Kennedy was addressing as well. From a system level, it allows us to do a couple of very important things. One, calibrate, making sure that our investigations, our employee relation issues, when we have issues at a school or a department, that we're consistent, that we're calibrating, that we're capturing the information, and then that we have a true sense of trends so that we can address issues before they happen through training, through interventions and things like that. That's the real system benefit of, uh, employee relations tracking system versus the contrast, which is somebody submits an investigation, somebody submits an employee issue and over here, and we really can't amass a real trend of where our big issues, our risk elements are and our training opportunities and things like that. It's a pilot because it's a big transformation of a system that, that is, that's going on in, in this department from paper and individual interaction, sometimes consistent, not in the past, now being very consistent and also allowing us to predict and to say that these are issues that sometimes come up in these situations and we can prevent them through training or, or discussion with our staff and, and informing our staff and things like that. That's a system benefit to this and, and I think that's, that's pretty much the level of, of the strategy, but there's a lot of detail.
I don't need details, I just kind of needed to understand, you know, what exactly it was. Thank you for explaining that to me, I appreciate that.
So some of the other things that's happened in HR is they have revised and modified our employee handbook, and then we've transitioned from the PDAS system for employee evaluation of teachers in the classroom to T tests. That's something that's been, was new last year. One area that we reorganized as well is the Office of School Leadership. The Office of School Leadership, it consists of four area superintendents and used to be horizontally organized, where you had elementary area superintendents and a secondary area superintendent. This last year, we reorganized the department to implement four pre-K-12 vertical areas with networks of schools that are each supervised by singular area superintendent. So each area consists of schools that are both at the elementary, junior high, and high school. Um, we tried to ensure that when we assigned these schools, uh, to each of the individual areas, that we did so responsibly. Um, we don't have pure feeder patterns in Arlington, uh, they, they're not, they're not exactly pure. So what we tried to do is make sure that there was natural vertical alignment, so schools that naturally fed into each other as much as possible, tried to keep them within the same area. And then we also tried to make sure that there was some distribution in terms of need so that schools that were high-need schools had, um, had ready access to the support they would need from an area superintendent. Um, some of the goals, uh, the outcomes that were intended around this redesign was to, um, really promote the mutual alignment of both the school structures or the school leadership structure, a supervision, supervisory structure, and the department structures. Our departments in the central office academic services side were vertically structured and schools used to be horizontal. When you tried to create a cross-departmental team where they were assigned to very specific clusters of schools, it made for a conflict that we had to constantly try to work around. Now that they're both aligned in a vertical structure, it makes for that support to be a lot more seamless. Also, it's increased our, our ability to effectively identify and begin to address vertical challenges because now we're having conversations not only about what we're seeing academically in the high school, but what possibly are the implications that are happening at the elementary school that are causing that to occur? Because the person that's supervising and working with those bands of schools is the same individual, um, that, whereas before it used to be two separate individuals. It also, um, allows for us to, while, while we're focusing on, uh, this vertical alignment, to also maintain a horizontal collaborative effort so high school principals can still collaborate with each other, junior high principals can still collaborate with each other, elementary principals can still do that. So it, this new structure, because of the way that it's designed, allows for both the vertical opportunities and horizontal, whereas before that was more of a challenge. And then finally, it increases the quality of, of collaboration, um, among the district officials in a way that allows for us to really address more system, system-wide problems because rather than having each, um, member of the Office of School Leadership function in isolation around their tasks, now they all share common, um, challenges they're working for, working around. So for example, in the past, we had one area superintendent that led all of the secondary, um, and that, that there, and a few that led elementary, but now we have four area superintendents that can all collaborate around a singular problem that multiple high schools are experiencing. So more brain power, more opportunities to be creative in our solutions. This is just some examples of some of the instructional responses that we had to bond initiatives, specifically STEM labs. As you know from Ms. Powell, we've been building STEM labs all across the district and we're getting towards the end of that. Um, what we have designed in the curriculum instruction department around the STEM labs are quarterly lessons that are made available to teachers where we take the math content and the science content, and then we've, we collapse them or combine them together around, um, a lesson that's really around a relevant problem, um, in the world. Um, those documents are made available for grades three through six. And we've also, to help enhance teachers' ability to do those lessons in the classroom, collaborated with, um, instructional technology to design a Canvas course called the Introduction to the STEM Way, which allows teachers to really start to understand, how do you, and how do you think about the instruction or the pedagogy differently when you are going into a STEM lab and teaching a lesson that's more STEM-related rather than being individually, like around math or around science in the classroom? We've also, um, worked with the instructional technology department to incorporate text applications and digital formative assessment tools into the curriculum for grades, uh, three through six. We have launched and, uh, the redesign of the Gifted and Talented Program, um, in the elementary ranks. And as you know, we have, uh, our implementation last year resulted in over the identification of over 1,000 students who were previously not identified. We initiated the cluster groups in grades one and two, and, and we also initiated the Ken Gore Learning Experiences, which was the pull-out learning opportunities for kids in grades K through two. Um, we, this year we expand, or yeah, last year we expanded Grenzuli, which was initially piloted. Um, we expanded that to 25 campuses in grades three through six, and this year we expanded it to the rest of the schools. Um, so this school year, what you're gonna notice is we have expanded the number of GT lead teachers. Um, we, we recognize at the end of last year, as we kind of assessed how the program was growing, that there was a need for additional, uh, GT teachers. Uh, we initially were gonna go one-to-one across the school district, but as you know, when we went through our program evaluation process and looking at how it was going, we recognized that that was gonna be, that really wasn't necessary at this point because we still hadn't identified enough students at all the schools to merit that. So we did, uh, add the, we strategically added GT lead teachers in schools where the need was there. Um, we have included an expansion of the cluster grouping of students to grades three, and we, as I mentioned, have implemented Renzuli in grades three through six now district-wide. Um, the Ken Gore Learning Experiences were also moved from K, K first and second grades to include grade three. And now we're in the process of designing literacy circles for, or implementing literacy circles for grades two through four. Some of the work that's also been done in, um, in the district is specifically about, been around enhancing the environment or the safety envi, the safe environment of students, uh, at schools and the classrooms. And so we have increased, um, our training and support for implementation of PBIS to focus on tier-two behaviors. Um, our initial run of PBIS was focused around tier-one behaviors, and so now we're initiating to tier, tier-two. Um, they've also implemented a review of campus discipline systems and also a systematic review of the data to see if the PBI system is in fact impacting students in the way that we intended to. Um, there is PBIS onboarding for late hires, so if you are new to the district and you've come onboard after school started, there's training, um, for you. We've also, they've also been collaborating with the instruction, curriculum instruction department, uh, to really help align professional learning so that we're, what we're trying to do is, rather than seeing behaviors as something separate from the teaching and learning process, to really help recognize how they're actually connected to one another and how we can be efficient in leveraging the same language in the classroom around instruction that you would in terms of teaching students about their behaviors. Um, training has been provided in PBIS for security staff, for the transportation department, for the cafeteria staff, for nurses, and for all after-school program providers so that there's continuity for kids as they're transitioning from one environment to the next. Uh, there's continuity in terms of their expectations and the way the adults are interacting with them. The communications department has also leveraged a, um, the design of a comprehensive communications plan, which included, um, key messaging, um, that involved new branding for ongoing campaigns, some of which you've already, um, seen. Uh, there's been a new platform, a creative platform that was developed and implemented and the, and then also the communications plans were developed for very specific key projects, including, uh, components that were marketing, branding, um, promoting specific district initiatives across our city, um, highlighting special programs so that people were aware of the things that we were doing, as well as, um, enhancing the way that we were communicating internally with our employees. I thought I would turn some time now over to Ms. Brown. Uh, she's led our effort across our system in implementing a new customer service framework from the initiation of the design all the way to the training. And so I thought we'd invite her here to the podium so she can share with you a little bit of how that went.
Good evening, President Reich, members of the board, and of course Superintendent Cavassos. Wanted to just share a little bit about, um, our customer service implementation during year one of our strategic plan. Um, our guiding principle around customer service is that every interaction that we have with others gives us an opportunity to cement the culture and perception of how people see our district and how they view us. And so our commitment is to make sure that we make every interaction count with all of our stakeholders. So I just want to bring back to you, um, our tenants of our customer service framework, our AISD serves, um, accessibility, how accessible, um, are we to our internal and external stakeholders? How can they access information about our district? Those are all relevant to accessibility. Tangibles, not only our physical plant and how our environment looks, but also what people see and feel when they are in an AISD building or in one of our departments. Uh, reliability is important and are we basically doing what we say that we're gonna do time and time again in a way that, um, we're dedicated to that? And we have responsiveness. Um, this is a key, which I'll talk a little bit more about in just a moment, but really are we responding expediently to concerns or challenges or issues that arise? And the last one is the anchor of our customer service framework, and that's really around empathy. And that is how are we able to understand our constituents, being able to provide and extend trust to them in a way that they are invested in us as customers as well? So, um, to share a little bit about our training opportunities, since August of 2016, uh, we've trained over 2,500 employees in a face-to-face, uh, conversation. Why that is significant is because we've had a cross-section of employees in those customer service trainings. For example, you may have 75 people in training and you may have bus drivers, security officers, technology folks, you might have clerks and, on the campus or administrators. And it really is a great, because even though we have individual functions in the organization, we were all having a conversation around what does customer service look like in the role that we serve? Um, and ultimately, it was about making sure that we have a common language, a common understanding, an expectation of what customer service should, what customer should experience when they interact with Arlington people. So that has been really great. So so far, we've had 36 sessions. Um, that does not include our campus-based employees. So, um, last summer, I trained principals, APs and deans, and they in turn went back and intentionally led that customer service training on their campuses, uh, to make sure that everyone was getting the same information. Um, we are continuing now, um, in our second year to have trainings four times a month. So we have four sessions and we still have plenty of folks signing up. Our last couple of sessions, we had over 100 people who've signed up for the training and the feedback has been pretty positive, which I'll share some of that with you in just a moment. I want to share and highlight some identified trends, which I think is just amazing because, um, before I even saw the other part of the presentation, these are some positive trends that came out, and you can see it's connected to year one strategies. The first one, um, really hearing from people in our sessions and then also through recognitions that the HR response and processes are much more expedient, and that just speaks to what we just saw on the slides previously. Uh, instructional technology support is very responsive. At the campus level, we're hearing positive things about, um, this department and how they're connecting to campuses and departments in a way that is fast, it's quick, um, and it's responsive. Uh, communications through social media, again, this is a way that people outside of our organization also are accessing us as a system. And so people are speaking positively about the uptick and our social media responsiveness, and that's really great as well. And overall, during the trainings, um, the internal customer service was considered pretty positive for the most part. I mean, you'll have blips here and there, but generally speaking, they felt positive about how we were interacting with each other. So one thing that we talked about during our, our conversations and our trainings was the importance of making sure that whether it's an internal stakeholder or an external one, that the experience they have in AISD should be the same. So whether it's talking to a parent or talking to someone in HR, that we should expect similar, um, responses and experiences. And the attendees seemed very pleased with having a common expectation, common language and framework. They did wonder about accountability, um, and we'll talk about that for just a moment in year two as some new things that we're gonna launch to try to gauge that our practices are really indeed making the kind of impact that we want them to. So the two, um, tenants of customer service that had, that generate the most conversation is around responsiveness and reliability, and really in a positive way and a lot of times, because, um, as we look at the, the folks who are making recommendations and affirming practices of people that they're seeing in the district, it's all around responsiveness and reliability almost all the time. So we talked about in our training that we are really, really committed to doing our best to respond within 24 hours. Sometimes it might be 48, but we don't want anything to go past 48 hours. And that was a commitment that we talked about in our focus group. So as busy as we are, um, we know that people who experience a quick turnaround in response from us are more likely to trust us and to think that we are reliable in the work that we do. So we're committed to doing that even better. So as far as the recognitions, I just mentioned, um, briefly to you all, we have a couple of things going that we started last year, and then I'll share what our thoughts are for this year is. Um, we started accepting nominations from anyone in the organization. We've even had some external people who have, um, emailed AISD serves@AISDnet, um, to nominate and affirm the practice of someone in our system who is exemplified- to nominate and affirm the practice of someone in our system who has exemplified excellent customer service. If they're responsive, they send an email saying, hey, Polly Walton was responsive when I made a request for X. And then as a result, what we do is we send a certificate to that particular person. We let them know that they have been highlighted and nominated for an award. It's emailed to them, it's copied to their supervisor. This happens to be Tony's, he got it in April. And you would, you would not believe how many times you go to a campus or go to a department and you see them, these certificates are hanging up. So what we're trying to do is make sure that our systems and our thoughts are taking root and that we're over-communicating our expectations and also affirming those who are doing a very good job at exemplifying one of our tenants, like Mr. Tony. He was one of our first award winners back in the spring. In the monthly newsletter, we also highlight-
Mr. Drollinger loves being examples for things. He loves it when he's called.
In our monthly newsletter, we are also highlighting five people each month. We get, we get a picture taken, and we just talk a little bit more about why they were nominated and why they stand out as one of our highlights for customer service. And so we highlight five people each month. So one of the things that we are going to do going into the second year, we're going to continue those practices that we have engaged in. We are going to have posters in every single campus and on every, in every department around the building and around our district to make sure that people know to nominate and to look for excellent customer service, just to make sure that we have the accountability piece and also the affirmation that we are doing good work in terms of our customers. And we are this year going to do a pilot, as I mentioned, to try to, you know, gauge, gauge some feedback on how our customer service practices are going. So we have several schools that we've identified to be our, our pilot schools and a couple of departments as well that we'll be able to get some feedback on. It'll help us shore up maybe where some gaps might be in our system and then also affirm where we see some really positive trends. So ultimately, we have a special obligation to provide great customer service to those in our community, to our parents, to our students, to our partners. And we know that the more friendly and responsive that we are to our, to our folks in the community, the more loyal they're going to be to us. And if they're invested in our organization, our kids are going to thrive, and we're going to do all the better. So we definitely believe that customer service going into year two is, is picking up steam, and we're excited to see what our next steps will be. Thank you.
Nothing else?
That's it.
All right, tremendous, tremendous implementation. There's some lights, so we'll have some questions before. Though I'd just like to lead out with, I, I can't wait, you know, this was year one. We'll see what happens when you really start to get going in year two. I'm totally kidding. It's amazing. It really, thank you. It is a tremendous undertaking. And all of this cursory overview information leads to so many layers throughout the system. And it's, I, I'm, I just, I feel very prideful for what we put together as a strategic plan and how, how you are implementing it in such a, a high-level deliberate thoughtful process to truly make it the best overall outcomes for our students as much as possible. So thank you, each and every one of you, for that work. So with that, Ms. Walton, you're up.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to mention something to Ms. Brown that I got just today. And I forwarded it to the two of you. The city of Arlington, it, it has to do with communications through social media. And I should have, I should have forwarded it to you too, Ms. Brown. It's a concerted effort by the city. They're going to put out little good things are happening type of messages. And they're asking the employees to pass, I, I got it because I'm on the board with the Friends and Foundation of the Arlington Public Library. But to, you know, pass these on, on our Facebook pages and our other places that we, we have social, you know, media access or whatever. So I thought it was a really interesting idea. Use, use the people you've already got to put out, you know, positive messages. And it's, it's a choice. I mean, I don't have to do it, but you know, it's, it, it might bear fruit. So I'll, I'll, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a couple of other questions too. Well, go back here. Under the enhanced safe environment, the systematic review of discipline data, will we see the results of, of that review?
I'm going to let Mr. Hill answer that question.
You know, in some sort of next step, or is that the end of it, or? Where does it go from here?
So we are working through what that looks like. And we've done it last year through campus principal and assistant principals meeting to let them look at their own data internally at the campus. And if we need to bring that forward from a district level, we can definitely do that if necessary.
So again, let me add, into the, kind of the system level, is, is the thinking is to look at the data like we look at academic data and curriculum assessment data and star performance and things like that, that we have the same view for discipline data.
Right.
And the same intentionality. And there's a lot of data that's collected, albeit from a system level, we need to identify more trends and occurrences and unduplicated counts in terms of are the same students having the same issues and things like that. So that's our, that's our work with the data. First, we had to build a data system to collect that. And let me just, a little bit of detail there, is to properly code all the different incidents, not just something general, because a general code doesn't really help you identify trends. For example, disruption is too general. I mean, what exactly happened and what are we talking about? And so that's a work that's been done year one. In year two now, we're going to look at that data just like academic data. And when we make board presentations and things like that, we want to infuse that in to tell the whole story of, of, of a situation or a trend or an intervention and things like that. Be much more purposeful.
I, I'm excited about the possibilities of that. I really are, I really am. Thank you for helping develop this, this idea. I think it's worthwhile. I, I think it will help lots of, not just the people in the classroom, the, the teachers and that sort of thing, but it'll help our kids too, if we understand what the problem is a little better. And then one more question. On the STEM labs, these are fabulous facilities. And I am so pleased that the district is, you know, hiring paraprofessionals to help with the, the organization and the running of those facilities. It can't do, you know, those STEM labs can't do anything but help our kids have hands-on experiences in the, the areas of STEM. Technology doing the Canvas course, introduction to the STEM way is an introduction for new elementary teachers, a great idea. Again, I won't beat the dead horse, but it would sure be nice if there was a designated embedded time for them to, to do this and have some follow-up and support on that too.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mrs. Mays.
Thank you, President Reich. Today, I was talking to a group of PTA parents and moms. And I was talking about fighting for public education. And one of the things that I said was, in a perfect world, this is how I would view a district for our students and our staff. And what I really appreciate about the work that's being done here is we'll never be in a perfect world. It'll never be 100%, but if every day we're trying to do something better, every day we're that much more close to being perfect. So really appreciate the work that's being done to make sure that we become as close to perfect as possible to make sure that our students are successful. So with that being said, I just had a couple of questions. On the user-friendly data system, PowerPoint and the MyTrack system that was implemented in the classroom, have you received any feedback from the teachers in the classroom as to the difference between the manual dashboards and the MyTrack system?
I personally haven't received any feedback. I don't know if the areas have, we haven't, we haven't really gotten any feedback from teachers specifically about it one way or the other. The intent behind it was to try, try to take some of the labor off of managing data. Right? And now it automatically uploads into it from, from the assessments once they're actually given. But in terms of feedback, one way or the other, we haven't received any specific feedback.
Okay. And so with the MyTrack implementation, will that allow you to be able to capture data a little bit more efficiently?
Well, what MyTrack does for a teacher, it allows them to analyze their class data after they take an assessment. But one of the things that we also do on top of that is we provide from research and accountability office data set, data reports, which are, which we call visualizations, actual data reports that you can actually look at the, the data in a classroom from the district level to the campus level to the individual teacher and student level. And those are all generated from internally in the district office. And those are sent out through an online kind of platform that we have. So there's almost like two opportunities that people can get their data. They, they look a little bit differently, but it just depends on which one they want to have access to. But the resources are available.
Okay. Okay, then on the-
Hold on, Ms. Mays. Dr. Cavassos wanted to add.
So we can make sure we include everybody in the room. Mark Murray actually is the one that, that leads a lot of this effort. And so he has gotten teacher feedback because that's where it would go. And it has been positive, that, I'll just summarize that.
Is there a thumbs up in the corner?
There we go.
All right.
So just, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, on the curriculum development, the K, K through two curriculum, and then the next steps. When you're redesigning the curriculum, are we getting feedback from our K through two teachers? On these, okay.
Yes, so we actually have, as part of the cadre that's working with the curriculum instruction department, we have representatives from across the district in K through two classrooms who are part of the process, kind of side-by-side. And it's a year-long commitment. So they've been working with us side-by-side since the summer and have entry points all throughout the year and are kind of supporting us not only in the development of particular components around where we're going and the integration of instructional resources, instructional approaches, but also identifying best ways for us to provide professional learning as we begin to implement the new curriculum, so.
Okay. And then on the curriculum revisions, changing this curriculum, modifying the curriculum, it sounds good because it sounds like you're doing it based on something that you saw. But is changing the curriculum or putting out new implementation during the school year, is that disruptive at all for the classroom?
Right now, what we're, for the K two, we actually have the current curriculum in place. So we're in the process of writing, vetting, working with teachers, working with experts in the field throughout the year. And we're going to write, develop, and build the, the curriculum for K two. And then we're going to launch for the next upcoming school year. So we're not doing them side-by-side. For the revisions that we talked about for three through eight and EOC, we wrote that curriculum last year. What we wanted to do is because we provided a lot of opportunities for teachers to provide feedback, where we wanted to make adjustments, where we looked at our data and saw where we needed to make revisions. And then we came back and scaffolded those revisions throughout the school year. So we started with the first two, six weeks that were available at the beginning of the, prior to the beginning of the school year. And then we worked on third and fourth, six weeks at the start around September. And as Dr. Wertz mentioned, fifth and sixth are being revised so that they're available in November. So we, we knew we had to go back and make revisions to the curriculum we just wrote. And so we did that in a way that we would be complete with that by November. And the rest of the year and into the summer, we'll be completing the K two so that we have the rest of, the remainder of the year to just focus on kindergarten through second grade and those non-EOC-tested grade levels at high school.
Okay.
Or courses rather, in high school.
Okay. On the gifted and talented redesign, so you mentioned that we were looking at the number of students that had been identified. And we were not doing, excuse my voice, y'all, I apologize, I'm weather changed. So for the schools where there was not, because you said you thought about a one-to-one. So for the schools where there are some students that have been identified as gifted, but there's not a, you're reading my mind.
Well, they do have, they do have a GT lead teacher. So I, they just don't have a full-time person. So the first year we implemented, we split, we split people between two schools.
Right.
And then as we were assessing along the way, our commitment was year one would be a one, a one school, one lead teacher for every two schools, that we moved to a one-to-one. But as we were looking and evaluating our, our system, we decide, we knew that we wanted to be physically responsible and make sure that we were hiring according to need. And so we evaluated where we were in terms of identification of students. And we noticed that in some schools, the identification placement of students wasn't as robust as in others and that they didn't really merit the need for an entire person full-time, that they were still in a situation where sharing was going to work. And so what we've done is we added an additional, I believe we'd added 16 new ones for this school year. And then we left in place pairing in a, in a, in some of the sites where, where it wasn't necessary to go to one-to-one. And as we move into the spring this year, we'll reevaluate. And where schools are ready for a one-to-one, we'll, we'll make that recommendation. But every school has access to a lead GT teacher.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarification from me. And then my last question, for enhanced safe environment, for the, the PBI system, how many tiers are there?
There should be three.
Three.
There are three, just like, and I think it's important, it's the same thing with instructional tiers. Typically, when we think of a tiered system, tier one usually will meet the needs for, to about 85% of the student population. When you get to tier two, it's a little more severe behaviors. And when you get to tier three, it's the most prominent behaviors. So ideally, when you've, you start with, you start with a tier-one focus because it captures most students. And then you refine your process and make sure that there's additional training for people who need to support students who have more severe challenges.
Okay. And then you kind of spoke to this already. So for the systematic review of discipline data, do you already know exactly what the leaders on the campus are really looking for in their data? Do they know what they're looking for, or do they just have it in?
And that, that's a part of the, the training is to, and, and it's going to vary campus to campus, grade level by grade level. And so that's the part of the training, is to see what those behaviors are that are bubbling to the top, that are causing, you know, the out-ofplacement or just the discipline referrals, and then putting in actions to address that specifically, so.
Okay. And I know I said that was my last question, I apologize. I should never say the last. There was one more question. For the, the training that we talked about for customer service, you said that the training that you've done excluded the campus-level employees, but y'all were training the principals and assistant principals, and they were going back to the campuses?
Yes.
Is that how the on-campus-level employees will be trained for customer service? Or was this just a one-time? Or is that how they will be trained in the future from their leadership?
Great question. That's how they were trained initially. We did the trainer trainers for the principals, APs, and deans. However, there are still some campus-level leaders who are still continuing to on, when they onboard, to train their new employees, and others are sending them to our training. So we give them the option, they can either provide the training or they can send them to a face-to-face at the PDC.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays.
Could I ask a follow-up question to one of Keisha's questions?
Yes.
Thank you. When we were talking about the, the PBIS tier system, and I understand that we're taking, you know, we're working the, the system with the 85% and now we're moving into the, the tier-two where there's, you know, some more kids. So in the meantime, what are we doing with those that are really probably going to be identified as tier-three students?
Again, we're trying to very hard mimic what we do with academics. And that's, that's the, the lens through which we look toward. And so we try to, if a student's having tier-three academic behavior, we resource that. We try to get to root cause. We're trying to do the same thing with, with the, with the behavior. And so there are strategies for behavior that work for tier-two and tier-three students. And that's where, I'm sorry, students that need tier-two and tier-three supports. And so we, we work with them. An example would be check-in, check-out as one. And so students got some behaviors, and we check in with an administrator or a teacher or someone that they have a relationship on their campus with throughout the day, just to see how it's going. And if things try to get array, or start, start to go bad, then we can try to address it at that point. But again, those, it, it's hard to say what specific they are because those behaviors are escalated, and it, it's almost on a child-by-child basis. are escalated and it, it's almost on a child-by-child basis when it gets to tier two and tier three supports.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate that. You know, I was like, I know they're not just letting those kids hang out, you know?
No.
That, you know, there's something, you know, while we're waiting to get to the tier three implementation or whatever that, you know, so thank you for telling me about that.
Sure, no problem. Yeah, fortunately, we already have a great system with student code of conduct that'll take care of those more problematic individuals. Ms. Hudson.
Thank you, President Rice. This is a dizzying amount of work to try to report on and take in. I can really only imagine what it's like to walk into the office every day and just jump right into this. So first of all, a lot of love, a lot of appreciation for the work that you guys are doing. We're going into a lot of detail here, but what I want to bring back is, at the very beginning, this is all really focused on making a better experience and better results for our students. So as we dive into these details, I think it's important to just remind everybody who's watching that this is really all very student-centered. It's just about what are the strategies that we do and carry out to benefit our students. So with that, I just have a couple of questions. First of all, so in the, where am I? Here we go. In the curriculum development, and I'm on page eight, at the very bottom you have next steps, revise the K two rubrics and report cards to align to the new instructional focus documents in year at a glance. This is a really kind of micro question, but the, the current K, at least Kinder, maybe first grade and second grade, you can enlighten me, are skills-based?
Mm-hmm.
So they're not getting like an 85 or a 90. It's more, yes, standards-based.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So you're, you're checking off, here are the things that they have mastered.
That's correct.
And that they've evaluated. My, my curiosity is, when I looked at that kindergarten report card, they're not assessing everything at the beginning of the year. And so it, if a kid comes in knowing all of this stuff, it kind of looks like they've learned it while they're there as opposed to being evaluated at the beginning of the year and then working forward from there. Is there going to be any work regarding sort of making that report card a little more accurate from the beginning as far as what skills the students come in with versus what they acquire while they're under our instruction?
Well, the, wait a second. I can speak to this real quick, which is, the, the way that the report card is actually designed is according to a scope and sequence of when those skills are actually introduced over the course of the school year.
Okay.
So some students will, the students will be assessed based upon what they're actually taught. And then if they don't master it or whatever, they get scored. The next six weeks, they have an opportunity to have that score either re-change so you can show an update of their learning until they master or show you that they haven't. But it's, it's not opened up completely because it's basically a way for you to have understanding about how that your student is mastering content, the level of mastery, as they're progressing through the course of the curriculum. If, if we opened it up the way you were describing and assess them at the front, we would have to assess them in the entire curriculum all at once, which would be the entire year's worth of work. And that's not typically what happens. What we do ask teachers to do at the beginning of their instructions to assess their students for learning before they get started. So if I'm about to teach you a unit, for example, or of study or a bundle, ideally, I would do a pre-assessment to get a sense of what you already know or don't know. And if you already know it, I would accelerate you. And then I would mark it as mastered on the report card for you. But I wouldn't necessarily be assessing your child on content I wasn't even going to approach until the end of the year, at, at the front of the year.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Bear with me. On the gifted and talented program, will we be getting specific feedback from the parents and from the students specifically? I'm very interested in the students as to how they feel like that's going?
Right.
If it's an enjoyable process for them, if they feel like they're getting something out of it or if it's just some extra work?
No, it's a really good question to ask, one that we definitely should be thinking about. One of our strategies as we get down in the further parts of the year, of, of the years is was specifically around a parent organization that's connected to the gifted and talented program where you can actually do those things, facilitate and solicit feedback from parents about the experience their kids are having in the classroom. We don't currently have a, a survey that's developed specifically for GT kids to give us feedback on their experience, but we are in the process of redesigning our, our, our student survey. And so there's no reason why we couldn't consider how we could identify students that are in specific programs and for them to give us feedback about their experience as, as they self-identify as a GT student. We could think about that for sure.
No other really specific questions, but this one is kind of the umbrella question that I think my two micro questions were kind of under, which is, this is a tremendous amount of work, a lot of change going on in the classrooms and in these larger systems that serve the classrooms. My question for y'all is, as we're going along, how are we quantifying and qualifying the success of these programs so that we can determine which of these strategies are really super effective and which of these strategies maybe are not? And if there's a synergy of strategies that needs to happen for it to work? How are we, I guess, assessing this work as we go along? Or is it just that we have to take it all as a, as a big unit and either it works or it doesn't?
That's a really complex question that I think we all, no matter what kind of program we're trying to do, we're always striving to answer that question, even with the District Improvement Plan. It's always something like, how do you find causation, right, for an outcome? And sometimes it's really difficult to really identify very specifically causation with one specific thing because there are lots of factors that impact whether a student's being successful or not. What we do have is two things that we do routinely with the strategic plan. The first one is on the front of the strategic plan, we have all these identified measures. So within each performance objective category, we have very specific targets that we have identified numerically, so quantifiable targets that are attached to that objective. So we say, if academic achievement is, this is what we think academic achievement means, these are the ways we're going to measure it quantifiably and these are the targets we have for each of the five years. We do that for all four categories. That's one way. The other way that we do it is we actually meet in senior staff with, with executive directors on a quarterly basis to review our implementation for every single strategy that's under each of those categories. So for year one, we met, over the course of every, every quarter, we would meet, just in the same timeline that you would find the District Improvement Plan. And we would report out to each other about the progress we were making on the strategies. And we had conversations about, we had ones where we were like, this one we have to discontinue, we're not ready for it, we need to push it to the next year and things like that. So we kind of had this twofold conversation. One is, are we implementing well and what's the quality of the implementation and what challenges are we experiencing? And then we look at the outcomes we're having in terms of like, for example, the end of the year when we look at student achievement, are we reaching our targets? And then the, the discussion that you, you have in your final review or the lend, the point that you would want to kind of think about is, is there a relationship between the two of those? But it's a complicated question to answer because there are, like I was saying, multiple factors that impact whether a student's successful. And it's not easy to identify whether this one thing made the difference or if it's a combination of multiple things. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
It did answer my question and I knew that it wasn't going to be like a simple answer.
Right.
Like, sure we do.
Yeah.
We just have this button that we push and it tells us.
No.
But I guess what I would request or encourage is, as we proceed further along and deeper in our strategic plan, that, that we do find ways to record this, maybe where you are as you're going along and then the improvement that you see.
Right.
Something like that so that we can glean some information from this. And as we make our next strategic plan or as we're sharing with other districts that are facing similar challenges to us, that we have something concrete to go on. And we don't try the same thing over again.
Right.
Because we didn't have any data on it and it wasn't successful the first time. Or we forget to do something that was really awesome just because we didn't have any data on it to back it up. So that's just something maybe to think about as we're going forward.
Well, one thing I might add too is, one of our strategies around program evaluation, right? And so one of the things that we do with program evaluation is we first identify like, what was the outcome you were actually looking for? What were you trying to accomplish with the program in the first place? And then we measure everything against it qualitatively and quantifiably. And so what you're going to find even in terms of the, the strategic plan is, many of the strategies are actually program-designed. For example, GT or the implementation of the active learning cycle or things like that. So what, what we also have an opportunity to do is to marry our program evaluations and the findings from those program evaluations to the strategies we're doing where you can actually kind of triangulate, you know, different types of data to help you understand whether, one, this is a program or, or an activity that actually made a difference for kids or if it's actually reaching the endpoint that it intended or it didn't. So that's, that's kind of one other way.
And that makes sense. Okay, good. That actually reminds me of one additional question that I had. And that is, as y'all are doing the reviews, the program reviews, within that review rubric, I don't know how it is that you do it, are you guys evaluating for duplicative services or inefficiencies, things like that?
All of that, including return on investment. And then we also provide findings and recommendations to the, that, that program manager so they can improve their practice. One thing that we talked about adding to even that is even almost like a template so they can create an action plan around the findings to ensure that it's actually going to translate into a growth and improvement at the end of the evaluation. Yeah.
Good deal. Thank you very much.
Okay, I don't see any other, other lights, so just in closing, again, thank you for all of the work. And it's, it's exciting to see where we've come, where we've come from. And this information has been presented, I appreciate you taking the time to, to present it to us, albeit most is somewhat repetitive over the, the course of time from previous presentations that, that you've presented. But bundling it all up in a, in a big overview is certainly obviously a good refresher with all of the questions. So that keeps us, I guess, fresh to be able to continually push out all the positive things that are going on and all the tremendous efforts and work that you're doing. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So now we'll move to the open forum for non-agenda items. Just kidding. Just seeing if anybody's paying attention or awake anymore. So next on our discussion items is the 2018-19 school calendar update. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Rice. And this evening, we'd like to visit with the board about our process for developing the calendar for 1819. This is really more of a process discussion. We had this discussion with our governance committee? Yeah. And, and so, or maybe finance?
Finance.
Finance.
Finance, yes.
Finance and academic committee, thank you. You're on both?
We're both.
And so this is an overview of that and make sure we have a good input on that.
We review that.
So Mr. Hill will provide that overview of our process.
Yes. And so thank you again, Dr. Kavassos and board and President Rice for this opportunity. Just kind of talk about the calendar process. Just a little background information, each fall, a committee comes together to kind of review and come up with a recommended calendar for the next school year. It's a committee comprised of principals, teachers, staff, parents, teacher organizations, community members in general, just to kind of get a good cross-section of people who the calendar will impact. This draft calendar comes from this committee, it's presented to administration and it will now go to this board committee for review. And then we'll, we'll, in the past, we've brought that back for, for vote, for adoption. Just a little bit about the law and education code. House Bill 2610 from a few years ago changed the requirement from seventy, from 180, 77 days to 75,600 minutes. This calendar, this bill also required that a calendar must include two, whether make-up days or the equivalent of minutes of 840 minutes. This bill also requires that early release days must be at least four hours or 240 minutes. Also, the education code and the state law requires a school district may not begin instruction prior to the Fourth Monday in August. AISD is a district of innovation and so we are exempt from that requirement. School district may not schedule the last day of school prior to May the 15th. Another requirement is that the school day must be at least seven hours long and it requires teachers to be employed on a 10-month contract with a minimum of 187 days in service. And so all of these are, are the parameters for which we kind of build a calendar through. The process that we are discussing will include, again, the board finance committee, the calendar committee, and we plan to put a link out on the website for candidates who are interested in applying to be on this committee. We plan to put that on the website tomorrow to go live. We'll, again, have teachers, students, administrators, parents, stakeholders, teacher organizations, and we'll come together and look at a draft calendar, potentially go out with a survey to some of the stakeholders based on a calendar that we presented to the committee. And then we'll eventually come back to the board with the recommendation. Our timeline for this, hopefully get it all done in December. That's the timeline. That's, again, what we shoot for, we may or may not make that. Some of the possible considerations that we'll be looking at are just a review of the minutes requirements and we know what they are. We are looking at the number of planning days, preparation days and workdays. We'll kind of look at the, the start date again and the end date and just other considerations that may come up through that process. Again, we're looking to start this over the next couple of weeks and try to get the committee going and then a couple of meetings, two to three or whatever is necessary to get it done. And then hopefully be back to the board with the recommend, with the calendar for discussion and approval in December at some times. So with that, we'll take any questions you have for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. The other several lights, first up, Mr. Hogg.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Mr. Hill, thank you for this. And I, I think as myself and Ms. Walton and Mr. Hill read this, I think we're, we're on the right path to how we do the calendar. I think a couple of things are planned. I think we've got a little easier calendar this year than what we had last year. I think last year was a pretty tough calendar, it was the first year of district innovation, had some different days to get it to fit in. I think it was definitely a, a tougher process. I think some flexibility of where y'all have gone has created, I, I commend you and I think we are going in the right direction. We ask, this is not our calendar. This is not an individual teacher's calendar, this is the district's calendar. This is taking everyone into account, which is very difficult to do. Because no one's, as, as our speaker before said, not everyone's ever going to be fully happy with a calendar. And I think any of us, those of us who've served long and anyone who's served recent, you know, it's never a happy thing. And I don't know how we keep getting people back on the calendar committee because that's a sometimes tough committee for our staff, but it's one of the most important because our calendar directs a lot of business of when their calendars are set up. It coordinates with other groups. And so I think it's a couple of things and, and I, I see some consistency. We ask staff recommendations for other things, we should be asking them for this. What fits best? What's the best model? Where we go with that? Then as our calendar committee and we have our staff feedback and those type of things come together through surveys or however we decide to do it, we then ask the community with not a broad overarching question, but here's a couple, which one looks like the best fit and feedback for everyone. I think that's an important factor. I think the other thing I think we've got to make sure we take into account is, and we always try to be a driver of the community and the, and the community, but what's happening with other districts surrounding us? Because that does make a difference on our calendar. And I say that specifically because I was reading earlier today, Houston actually bonded, I don't want to say bonded together because I don't know if any of them, districts fully bond together, but they do have coordinating committees within other districts in Houston and they all kind of agreed to create a unified calendar somewhat to help with so many different organizations and so many different districts, sometimes backing right up to each other and multiples within one city is where that coordinates. So I think Houston did that and I think it's a good idea. I mean, it's just being very attentive to other districts and trying to coordinate. Because we do have folks that have kids in each district, they work in one district or they work in one and then they have kids in ours or they have kids in, they work in this one and they have kids in the other. So I do think as much as we like to think we're our own person, I think this is the one area where I would highly recommend we coordinate with other districts, make sure we're all on the same page on calendars and try to coordinate as much as possible with our surrounding districts. Otherwise, I'm all for the process and how we're going through and I think we're hitting the right buttons.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mrs. Hudson.
Well, actually, I, thank you, President Rice. I think Mr. Hogg was reading my mind because-
I am.
Literally, I should wear my foil helmet. Because everything he said was exactly what I was going to say. I'll, I'll just go ahead and repeat it since I've got the mic. Yeah, I mean, I think the process is a really good one. I really sincerely appreciate all the people who serve on the committee and go back and forth and back and forth trying to make this as good as possible for everyone who's affected by it. And I agree, taking a look at what the other districts around us do, we're not an island. And our, our parents, our teachers, our students are looking at the calendars of other places. And if they feel like that's better, we're finding out about it. So finding out what they feel like is going well in those districts and finding out maybe the ways that we're doing it well, I think would be very beneficial. But I agree, this is a really great process, and maybe just adding in, taking a look at the districts that surround us would improve the process. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudson. Mrs. Walton.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. I just have to disagree with Mr. Hogg that this is going to maybe be an easier calendar. There is no such thing. And, you know, some are just harder than others, and last year was definitely one of those, and, you know, I think all of us would agree with that. I think it's a great idea that we get this finished by December. I think that will please lots of parents and teachers and kids, that they will kind of, you know, know far enough advance that they can make their trips plans to wherever they're going. I do appreciate the broad base of input of groups that we will, we will get input from. I think it's important, maybe, to, you know, to compare with other districts or whatever, but I think it's really important that we coordinate with UTA and TCC and the people who are right here in our midst, and be sure we, you know, don't cross our skis with them. We've got kids now going to school in Arlington and TCC and UTA all at the same time, and so, just, it only impacts a few kids, but there's lots of other people who work at UTA and have kids in the district. So I know we've always done in the past, we've always coordinated very closely with our college and university, so I would think that would happen again this year, I hope so. So, thank you for taking this on, Mr. Hill, and best of luck.
Mrs. Hudson.
Thank you, President Reich. I did have one follow-up question, and that is, I think the last time that we were talking about the calendars, this may have come up, which is the possibility of looking at establishing our calendars more than a year out? Because obviously, if we're approving something in December or January, that's just for August, that's only a few months in advance for people who are trying to plan their next year's vacations and trips to see family, et cetera. I would like to hear from the calendar committee and from staff if they feel like we have the capacity and the ability to forecast our calendars out maybe a year in advance, even if it's that then we come back and reserve the right to tweak it and reapprove it. But I think giving, giving people that ahead notice would be, there would be some benefit to the people that we serve.
Thank you, Mrs. Hudson. I don't see any other lights, so I'll finish with, actually, I had that down as one of my suggestions or talking points. Through previous years, it's, obviously, if it's something that can be attainable or is attainable, let's try to look at it. If we have to change the process to where we're doing the calendar in May versus now, maybe that works. Maybe there's a template to have the next two years out there with the full disclaimer that that second one out is completely subject to change and just a tentative type of thing. I don't know, but something for the committee to look at. The only other thing that I have written down is with the minutes and snow days, I know that's going to be assessed and addressed. Are we doing anything for this current calendar to make any kind of adjustment or look at that? Is that this committee that would do that, or is that you and senior staff, or what?
So I think current calendar is not a task for this committee. That's something that internally we've had some discussions about, and I think it's too early now, because we're in the middle of weather season, but we've had conversations about if, if that, if those days aren't used, then we would be having the conversations about what to do about that.
Okay, all right. Good. A fast question, you have to talk really fast.
You said that we're required to do at least seven hours, what are we doing right now, a day?
We're doing four hundred and thirty-five minutes right now.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. So, the timeline, then, will, the committee will go through their process, I guess, over the next month, and then we'll, in December, we'll have the options to choose, or the option to consider?
Well, we want to bring back in December, ideally, bring back after we've done all the work, here is what we recommend.
Okay, okay, good, good, very good. That's a lot cleaner, thank you. All right, so we're going to move, then, to the next agenda item. And in fact, unless there's a strong will from the board that's here, I'm looking at, once again, Ms. Powell, moving the bond program update to the next meeting. Because of the late hour, we don't have Mr. Chapa, Mr. Hibbs here, but I'll leave it to the pleasure of the board. It would be the second time we've pushed it to another meeting, but it's also kind of something that's pretty important for everybody to be here, but.
This is a quarterly update, I would probably say, let's push on. I think we get pretty constant updates on bond. I feel like I'm fairly up to speed, but I would say we push on for the next twenty minutes.
Pulse. You're good, you're good. Okay.
Who needs sleep? I have a sick child at home, so I'm willing to stay as long as possible tonight. Don't tell my wife that, please.
No, surely she's not watching right now. Well, Mrs. Powell.
She's already yelling at me, I know.
I tried, but here we are, so.
We will be brief, we know the hour. All right, thank you, Dr. Reich, board members, Dr. Kavassos. We do want to update you on activities with the bond package. We all know we have a, we're in the middle of a $663 million bond package. We're, I would say, in the first quarter or so, what we think of in terms of years, but in the fourth year of the bond program, and things are moving along quickly at the moment. When we voted for the bond package in 2014, total of $663 million, we mapped out how we would sell those bonds over a five-year period. We actually had the bond sales in the summer, we've had four so far. We've sold 627 million of the 663 million that's been authorized, and so we have a balance of just over 36 million to sell, and we plan to sell those bonds next June. The bonds are set to be repaid over the life of the assets that they fund. So for technology, it's five years, for bonds sold to buy fine arts instruments and equipment, we repay those bonds over ten years. Vehicles, we repay over twelve years, and then facilities over twenty-five years. I will point out that before the bond package passed, we had a debt service tax rate of just a tick over 25 cents. We said throughout the bond information sessions that we thought the tax rate could go up as much as 15 cents from that point, up to about 40 cents. We've never reached that, and in fact, our rate has come down each of the last two years, so that's something that we're pleased with.
Ms. Powell, just a quick reminder, 14 cents from that 37?
No, it was 25 cents before we voted on the bond.
Twenty-five, so we were saying up to possibly 30 now.
We thought we would get up to about 40 cents.
Forty, okay, thank you, thank you.
All right, this slide simply shows the finances of where we are through Phase Four, the budget, what we have actually encumbered, which are open POs, and what we've spent to date. You can see that the bottom right shows that we have $213 million available. That's largely because this is captured as of the end of September, and so we have sold that fourth round of bonds this summer, and a lot of those contracts will still be let all the way into next summer. So of the total, we have spent or either opened on PO, 66% of all the dollars that we've sold bonds for in Phases One through Four. We have 34% of those total dollars available to let contracts that we plan to let in this upcoming year. In terms of fine arts, so far, from Years One through Three purchases, we've spent $4 million. We had a million six open on POs, and we still have $2 million available for expenditures. In terms of the instructional impact that the fine arts dollars have had, you can see here that we've had tremendous growth in participation in our fine arts areas, and it's something that has come about largely because of the equipment that we purchased and made available to students, and then also the fact that we have waived any rental fees since the beginning of this bond program. And so we've tremendously increased access to students who want to participate in any of these, these different areas. So, fine arts works very much on a cycle in terms of bond sales. In the fall, they work with the directors and assess needs, find out from each one of the schools what their needs are. They match the need up with the enrollment in the different programs at those schools, and then with our existing inventories, to determine what instruments actually need to be purchased in that upcoming year. They then work with purchasing in February, March, to do the bids, and then we place the orders in the spring so that the instruments are delivered in the summer in time for the upcoming school year. So that's kind of the cycle that we work on. The fine arts administrative staff is very much involved in the development of the design for the new Fine Arts Center at the moment, along with assessing those instrument needs for the year four purchases. They also are involved on the instructional side in planning the curriculum and the professional development for the third grade cohort that will be accepting into the two Fine Arts Dual Language Academies next year. Mr. Brandon's going to want to speak for just a moment about the safety, security, and technology piece of the bond program.
Good evening. We're going to continue here just for a minute on update on the technology portion of the bond package. As you can see, over the first three years, roughly $48 million has been spent. We have roughly $10 million available. A large portion of that will be spent fairly quickly as we continue our rollout of our pre-K through two iPad initiative over the course of this school year. So while we show 10 millions available, that will go down pretty, pretty quickly as we're phasing that out and finalizing that as a part of this bond year. To date, we have roughly 84% of our funds spent with 16% available. As you know, a part of our efforts is a collaborative effort with our security department to ensure that all the, all of the data cabling is properly in place, so that we can then proceed with the ongoing installation and configuration of all of our cameras across the district. Part of the goal of the bond package was to increase our coverage of security cameras from roughly 30% to 80% across all of our campuses. We're fortunate enough to complete 855 of those sites to date. We have a few phases that have a few stragglers outstanding. Our Phase Two locations, Johns and Goodman are on hold due to renovation work. As well as Phase Three, we have remaining locations outstanding. They're partially completed, we're hoping to complete those over the next few weeks. And Phase Four planning is underway to complete Arlington High School as well as Lamar. Here is a beautiful picture of our brand-new technology data center that currently resides as a part of the CTC facility. We're very proud of that. Hopefully, at some point, we'll be able to do a tour and go into more detail about the state-of-the-art facility that we've had the opportunity to create. Just to highlight a couple of things that really came as a part of that integrated effort, really, is replacing all of our, basically reducing or consolidating our sites from three to one to have proper power cooling, as well as space to be able to provision all the services across the district. We're also able to establish a new disaster recovery site and really put our services in a position to always be up for all of our teachers and our students. Another thing that really stands out about that is just the technology that resides within the infrastructure. We put in what we call kind of hybrid cloud technology that really sets us up long-term for success, to really be able to scale and give us the flexibility as we grow as a system to meet the needs and demands of all of our, of all of our users and our customers. Couple of other parts of our bond package involve infrastructure, not just at the data center, but also at our campuses. We have computer closets at all of our sites across the district. Currently, this school year, we're planning to do upgrade 13 campus sites, as well as PA systems at eight campuses and telephone systems at 18 locations. And then, of course, a part of our bond package is ongoing replacement schedules. So when you see computers, printers, all those miscellaneous things that need refurbishing and maintenance over the course of the year, we have replacement funds available to be able to maintain those. A highlight that I always love to talk about regarding our technology bond packages, our TI grant process, I think y'all are very familiar with that. I'm happy to say, we recently just awarded a total of 70 grants to 37 campuses across our district, just over a million dollars. So to date, over the first four years of our bond program, we're a little over $4 million awarded as a part of that program. If you ever have any desire to kind of see the full details of the current, as well as historical process of the TI grant process, there's the website that you can go out to and get a ton of information about the TI grant process. Technology standards, I'm happy to say that we've made great progress. Our teacher standard, which includes laptops and docking stations for all of our campuses, is complete, that's been deployed. Our AV standard, we have 52 schools complete. Our goal is to complete the rest of the campuses this school year. Hopefully, we can accomplish that. We've been actively going, every campus brings a different story, so some have been quicker than others, but we're making, making good progress. Our student standard, we've been able to create our, we've been able to complete our Chromebook standard, I'm happy to say, our iPad standard, our goal is to also complete that this year. So at the end of this year, that student standard will be complete as well. That's it.
Terms of transportation, we've spent $11.2 million over the last three years, and we've got $41,000 on an open PO right now. $4.1 million is available, and that's from the last bond sale. Tonight, the board approved on the consent agenda the purchase of buses and white fleet vehicles that will largely consume that $4.1 million. So in terms of buses, we've ordered and received 79 buses to date. We are going to purchase 20 buses this year under the authority you all gave us earlier this evening. That'll be include three diesel buses and 17 propane buses. On white fleet, we ordered 23 this past year, and we've just received the last one. We've had 22 of them for a while, we got the last one in just in the last week or so, and we have 25 that are scheduled for replacement in the 17, 18 year. Again, that was part of what you all approved this evening on the consent agenda. In terms of facilities, we've spent $282 million to date. We have 58 and a half million dollars open on purchase orders right now, 192 million dollars available. There are 98 projects that are active at the moment. We have a number of projects that wrapped up late this summer that will be in the closeout stage in the, this fall, and so the next time we bring this to you, you will see a larger number that have actually been closed out and fall off that list altogether. In terms of the projects in Phase One, the only one where we still have work really ongoing is the Career Tech Center. They're still wrapping up a few things there. All these other projects you see in the right on blue have been completed, and we are occupying those spaces. We've got a number of pictures here, I'll go through quickly. This is also a picture of the Career Tech Center, the front of it, and the main corridor through the middle of the building, is what we refer to as Main Street. And these are, on the left, another picture in the main corridor, looking to the back, the student entrance, the building. On your right, two different classrooms, and you can see that, I think on the upper right is a floral design, but on the bottom right is a, an engineering class. And then we have pictures of several of the different labs at the Career Tech Center, the building maintenance lab, welding lab on the top row, and then CNC on the bottom, and Fire Academy storage area for our fire truck that the city graciously donated to the Fire Academy program that is housed there. We also have a cosmetology project, or program at the CTC. There are actually two huge labs at the CTC, and they're full. Every time I walk by, there are lots of kids in there, and that's a great thing to see. On the right, the auto tech shop. There are 17 new programs being offered at the Career Tech Center, and you see them listed here. And we have a total of 4,700 students that are being served at the Career Tech Center and the Ag Science Center. This is several pictures at Bowles Junior High, where we added some classrooms to create a new special ed wing, and added some classrooms to replace rooms we took for that purpose. a new special ed wing and added some classrooms to replace rooms we took for that purpose. In terms of Phase Two projects, a lot of these are under construction. You see in the middle column that where it says bid Arlington, Morton, and South Davis, we approved that bid package this evening and so that will now move over into the construction We have several pictures here of our new Ag Science Center. We actually have, residents have moved in to the Ag Science Center. We have twenty goats and one heifer, I believe, that have moved in and they all seem quite happy with their new surroundings and the kids were pleased. I was over there the day that they were bringing in the goats and there were parents there with their kids and really it was, it was kind of a neat thing to see the kids were excited and the parents were pleased, so that was good. This is a welding lab on the left and two other pictures of the exterior of the building. This is a picture of the Sam Houston High School cafeteria that is coming along. This will be complete in December. And it's a picture of the inside of the facility. And then, several other pictures at Sam of work taking place inside the existing building. On the left will be dance room and then on the right, you have locker banks that are being replaced. This is a picture of a classroom addition at Crow. Crow's been a challenge for us. It's such a small campus on a very tiny, or it's a small building on a small campus in a tiny neighborhood, you know, and the traffic is kind of a challenge. And we wound up, in order to get them their STEM labs, had to do a classroom addition and in order to create the security vestibule, we really had to rework the entire front office area. And so, they've been troopers and this is coming along, should be finished early spring. This is a picture of a classroom addition. There are actually two classrooms shown here. We're looking right down the wall that separates them, two STEM labs here at Foster Elementary. Ellis, we have classroom addition going in there to provide them with their STEM labs. And then, we've got several pictures here, I believe, of STEM labs that have opened at different schools. Previous one was Piercy. This is Sheridan. And you heard Dr. Wertz talk about the STEM labs earlier. These are strings rooms at several different schools. And renovated music rooms also at different schools. We tried to put the strings room and the music rooms right next to each other to accommodate the morning drop-off of instruments because the strings teachers are traveling teachers. They may not be there in the morning every day, but the music teachers are. And so, we try to keep those two rooms located close together so that they can, the music teachers can assist with letting kids in to drop off their instruments. Several pictures here of security vestibules. And then, renovated reception areas. These have made quite a difference. There are several schools that, as we created the security vestibule, we had to address the office area as well. And so, when we did that, we reworked the front reception area and they're very nice. Some pictures of, you know, it's hard to get real exciting about mechanical renovations, but we've replaced a lot of air conditioning equipment and will continue to do so. So, just pictures of mechanical work, roof work at several schools, and then driveways and parking lots. And this has made a big difference at a lot of schools, just in terms of logistics in the mornings and afternoons. And pictures of landscaping. And this is something we'll continue to work on through this bond program and upcoming bond programs. But it's amazing how, you know, a little touch of color and what have you makes a real difference in curb appeal and look at the whole campus. And then, a variety of items here, everything from new carpet to playground fencing to new water fountains and gym floor. Phase Three projects, again, we've got about half of these are under construction on the consent agenda this evening. The board approved bids for gun, key, pope, short spear, web, and wimpy. All came this evening, so all those will now move over into that construction column. Butler, the bids for Butler have come in and we are scheduling, we've done evaluations on those. We're scheduling interviews next week. Fine Arts Center design is very much underway. The tracks are about to go out for bid. The documents are about finished. This is a picture of the Sagan addition where we will be adding new classrooms. This is where we've taken brick off of the existing building to begin the addition. Phase Four and Phase Five projects are both in design. We've hired architects for all of these projects and so they all are currently in design. So, we're done hiring architects for this particular bond program and we will start bringing the Phase Four projects, the construction bids. We'll start seeing those next spring. And then, the Phase Five projects, probably about this time next year, maybe a little earlier, you'll see those and be well on our way. In terms of hub participation through September, in terms of the contracts that have been let, we have commitments of twenty-three percent hub participation. In terms of the pay applications that have been submitted against those contracts, we've recognized eighteen percent participation. And just, we continue our design work on both the Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex. The board approved the schematic design for the Fine Arts Center on October fifth. So, that work has now moved into the design development phase, which is really the first real technical piece of what the architects do, where they lay in all the systems, the HVAC system, electrical systems, plumbing systems, all that throughout the structures. Athletics Complex, the board approved the program for the Athletics Complex on September the seventh. That is in, that project is in the schematic design phase. We have a target date of December seventh to bring the schematic design back to the board. So, that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Ms. Powell. I feel like, I felt good because I felt like I was fairly updated as we started going through that from where we stood on all the projects as we worked through. Two questions. Are we on track to complete everything from the bond that we expected to?
We are. We're having to be real careful with our budgets right now.
My second question was on budget. So, I just want to know, are we on track?
We are on, we're on track, yes.
Second question, are we on track to be within the budget?
We are really tight and we, as a staff, finance, and plant services have made estimates periodically and at the moment, I have us just to tick over.
Yeah.
But I think that, and this all goes back to choices we make as we go along and having to be very careful in what we scrub, I think we still have opportunity to gain some ground and to finish just unders.
Okay. Thank you. I, the amount this bond is covering and the outcomes that we've seen, they've performed and serving on, we all serve on different committees to help oversee all these different pieces. And when you walk into some of these schools, it's miserable while they're going through construction.
Mm-hmm.
No one's happy. Staff's not real happy. They don't really like Kelly Horn when all that's going through on construction. Sorry, Kelly, they get blamed for a lot of it. But once it's completed, it's a very successful project and they love it. So, I appreciate all the work all of y'all are doing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mrs. Mace?
Thank you, President Rice. I just wanted to say thank you for now splitting out and showing the amount of hub participation that was committed and the actual amount that we are encountering once the bid is paid. I just want to say thank you for splitting that out for us to see.
I don't see further lights. Thank you for the update and I do appreciate the photos because I haven't been able to get to all of those places, so it's nice to see some of that. Thank you very much and look forward to the next one. Thank you. Moving on now to the open forum for non-agenda items. We do not have any cards, so we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Rice. I'd like to share some information going on across our district. First, the partnership that we have with General Motors and the Arlington Assembly employees at Roark Elementary, with Roark Elementary students to bring number sense. The employees and the program, they give immediate feedback and they track the students' progress in mathematics. This is a nice GM partnership with Roark and then the GM employees in particular. Next, congratulations to Leslie Powell from Wimbyish Elementary, Tyler Smith from Nichols, Maria Mandragon from Bowie High School, and Ian Powell from the Transportation Department. They're our employee and teachers of the month and it's fun to go honor them and even more exciting to see the students and the staff reaction when they're honored. These individuals are just a representative of all the great staff that we have in our school district and we're really, really blessed to have such great people working with our students and in our departments. Annual luncheon for our nonprofit and civic groups was held October seventeenth at the PDC, was very well attended. Able to give them an update. I wanted to thank specifically the Parent and Community Engagement Department for putting these together. It allows us to really share some important information and have connection, the community feel connected to our school district and what's happening there. Arlington Collegiate High School teacher Jennifer Fuller was very surprised October eighteenth when she was awarded the Milken Educator Award that came with a twenty-five thousand dollar unrestricted check for her. Unrestricted, yeah, and we made that clear. And Commissioner Mike Murath was able to join us, State Representative Chris Turner, and of course, the Milken Educator Foundation. This is called the, or known as the Oscars for Teaching and Jennifer's just an outstanding teacher, person, and employee. She serves on many of our committees and really contributes exceptionally to our school district. So, again, congratulations to Jennifer Fuller from Collegiate High School. Again, as Ms. Powell noted, the Ag Science Center has new residents, I think she called them, with goats and it's a twenty-three thousand-plus square foot facility that's just incredible and our students are very pleased to be there and using the resources. So, thank you to our community as another bond project for our students. Williams Elementary celebrated twenty-fifth year anniversary this month with students and staff and the family of Tommy Williams was in attendance and had many great stories to share about Tommy's real impact, not only in the schools but in her community. And so, I want to thank them for taking time to join us in this special twenty-fifth anniversary. Last weekend was Destination Success Parent University at Sam Houston High School and this is free college planning for SAT and ACT prep, career readiness and scholarships, et cetera. The event was well-attended and parents and students alike benefited from these type events, again, from our parent and community engagement. Finally, our annual opportunity AISD is from five-thirty to eight on Tuesday, November fourteenth at the new CTC, the Dan Diopert Career Tech Center. We're going to host this event and parents and students are absolutely welcome to come and join us and learn about all our opportunities, not only CTE but advanced placement courses, IB, and all our specialized programs, STEM Academy, Dual Language, Fine Arts, Arlington Collegiate. Transfer information will also be available that evening. So, join us and that's the day that our applications open for all our specialized programs as well. So, I want to thank our Communications Department for working on this project and all our staff that's part of this and our students because they're the ones who are also providing information that evening. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kavasos. Any school board members with reports?
I'll give one.
Ms. Walton, go ahead.
The Parent University at Sam Houston was very well-attended, beautifully run by our staff and Justin Chapa and I were both there and were given the unique opportunity of the principal, Mr. Benavides, taking us through the new ninth-grade center. And golly, is that really a nice, wonderful facility that I know the kids are really benefiting from. Very positive feedback from the two APs that are involved there. Not quite finished, but it's getting, it's getting close. The kids are there and that's the main thing. Also paid a visit, ran by Crow Elementary on that same day and they were working on Saturday, so they're trying to get done. And the last thing was I visited our new residents at the Agricultural Science Center last Monday with my two grandkids. So, yeah, we're now on a first-name basis with two of the goats. So, the heifer was a little less, she was a little more. She just had gotten there, so she wasn't really, you know, interested in company. But we know that her name is Bluebonnet and we probably will go back and visit. It's going to be a great opportunity for our elementary kids to take field trips to that place and see all about, you know, the ins and outs of agriculture and how important that is. So, it was a good week.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Walton. Mrs. Mace?
Thank you, President Rice. I had an opportunity to be a part of Peach Elementary, starting their brand-new PTA. So, congratulations to Peach. Also had an opportunity to speak with the Council of PTAs today on the subject of fighting for public education. Always enjoy seeing the PTA group. And then, I have a shout-out that I'd like to make to Leslie Johnston, our Director of Communication, and any others who had a hand in shutting down, literally, the highly inappropriate verbal actions of an internet-only broadcast of the Sagan High School football game last week. I am so very proud of our Sagan Nation and Principal Ray Borden for going high when others went low. Thank you to The Ticket, who will broadcast the Sagan Cougars versus the Burleson Elks gang tomorrow night with a play-by-play coverage that will start at seven with kickoff at seven-thirty. So, shout-out to The Ticket, Sean Bass, Donovan Lewis, and Jake Kemp for doing this broadcast. All of our students and our staff deserve respect and as leaders, we demand respect for our students and our staff and especially, especially when they are representing the district. So, in the words of The Ticket, "We are in full support of the Sagan Cougars football team, cheerleaders, faculty, and staff, family, and community. We will be working alongside Arlington ISD and Burleson ISD. The Chemilis Media Radio Station is able to give the Cougars a complete, professional game day of broadcast." Thank you.
Ooh, hear, hear. Very well said, Mrs. Mace. Thank you.
Makes you nervous when they say "The Ticket says." That always, it's an awesome thing they're doing for Sagan. I'm so proud of The Ticket for doing that.
It is. Absolutely is. I don't have a report. I do want to say thank you to my colleagues here. You guys are doing tremendous work besides what was in your reports. You didn't even mention the fact that at least three of you, four, including our superintendent, did travel between the last meeting and now to Council of Great City Schools and really appreciate your work that you're doing, so many hours that are put in and that was immediately after our last board meeting. So, it's all a blur. And then, for Dr. Kavasos and your team that has been participating very, very much into the Holdsworth process as well. So, a lot of work. I really appreciate your dedication and your commitment. Good team. And with that, Madam Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Yes, President Rice. Our one item is for the staff to present the outcome of the program evaluation from the strategic update given today.
Yeah.
Or to the board committee.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Very good. All right. It is ten forty-three and we are not moving to closed session. This meeting is adjourned.